We are live on Zoom. Gentlemen, live on Zoom and we're live on Facebook.
All right, great. All right, it is six, oh wait, hold on. I'm just gonna wait for it. It's six oh one and I now convene the regular meeting of the class at school committee to order Wednesday, September twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two. We will do a roll call, start with Mr. Carr. Mr. Kearney has informed me he will be a little late. Ms. McCollum?
I'm here.
Ms. St. Orange is absent today. She has other commitments and me and Mr. Dial is here. We have three to five members represent the quorum. And so with that, we have a full meeting and we will proceed. We will start as usual with our pledge of allegiance to our flag over there.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You gotta move that flag closer, I can't remember.
It's, I can see, you can see it. So as far as opening remarks, we're going to have one slight agenda change, just for efficiency sake. We're going to move Principal Scott forward from teaching and learning up to invite guests, since he's also invited guest, he fits in both areas of the, of the, of the agenda, just for, for efficiency. But before we go there, we will use our typical time of opening the floor for public comment. These are comments that are meant for items that are not on the agenda. You can use this time to let us know that you have something that will be on the agenda, but we will not discuss it until we get the appropriate agenda item. And so with that, we'll pause for a couple beats to see if we have any public comment. Hearing none, please remember you can always comment throughout the meeting, especially on chat. There's no one here in person, so definitely on chat, or you can run in and comment in person. But with that, we will move on and head to, should we turn it, Dr. Stone?
I think that's a great idea. So this will be great. I just wanted to update the committee on our accreditation this year. It's every ten years, so it's a decennial accreditation by an organization called NEAS, which is the Association of Schools and Colleges. And basically, it's an audit of best practices for schools. So they divide their standards into four categories. Learning culture, which is school safety, written curriculum, mission vision, those types of documents. Student learning, which is the actual curriculum and teaching and learning elements there. Professional practices, which are the supports that we have in place through professional development. It's our school improvement plan, it's our district strategic plan, those types of documents. Learning support, which is really our tiered support model, so making sure that all of our students don't fall through the cracks. And then learning resources, which is essentially the physical plan and the budget and the support for the curriculum that we have there. So it's very similar to how we've divided our strategic plan up. It falls into, you know, basically the same categories. I'm very confident with what we're doing. I think it's going to mirror what we've already identified. And so this year, in October through March, we engage in a process called self-study, where we go through all of the standards that they have listed out. We identify evidence that shows whether we do it or don't do it. We come back and we rate whether or not we're doing those things. And then in May, they send a team of, I think, three people to basically verify and kind of walk through, you know, those things that we're doing well and those places where we need, you know, some help. It's peer reviewed. So for example, I'm going to hand over in December to do the same thing. So you do get people who understand kind of limitations of schools, but also, you know, have good intentions and good experience. They'll give us an improvement plan. We have a year to implement that and then we are actually accredited in two thousand and twenty-five. So we're actually in year twelve because COVID delayed it a year and they changed their process based on feedback from some other public schools. So we're right on our timeline, but we're in year twelve of the decennial accreditation.
So I have some questions, but any questions in the, in the product committee? Just, I guess, who, who does the accreditation? Is it a government entity? Is it, I guess?
NEAS is a private organization. It's considered the gold star of the accrediting agencies. There was another one that they don't have a lot of experience around here, but NEAS does both. They do publicly and private schools, they do elementary, high school and colleges.
And is it, it's, as I understand, more of a common force required? Is that correct?
It's not required, but it's good practice. So for example, if a student takes a course at another school and comes over, we wouldn't necessarily accept that course if it wasn't from an accredited school.
And the other thing is the way colleges may look at, and universities may look at a high school needs non-accredited versus accredited could potentially be different. So although it's not required, it's something that, it's a standard that's accepted and something certainly, you know, a quality school district like will have some strive to.
It's also helpful, you know. It's good to have other people who are in the industry come and have fresh eyes on what you think, you know, your strengths and weaknesses are.
And so you mentioned the process is kicking off now. We're a little latest, but COVID and so on. So it's been twelve years since our last accreditation, but it will not be complete for three years until, three years.
So this is the big year of work. So they're setting the liaison out on October seventh during our professional development day. A lot of our PD time is going to be spent. We've divided the faculty into teams that mirror the categories. We've met with the steering committee. They need to go and start to gather evidence and go through the standards and unpack a little bit of that. That'll take us to March. Then the NEAS sends what they call a collaborative conference visit in May. Then we have a year to follow up on their recommendations and then they come back out for the accreditation.
So May they'll offer some recommendations. Right now it's information gathering, then they'll go back and think and tinker and come up with some sort of recommendations. Is there anything during this process that you might need from us as a school?
I don't think so. We met as a leadership team over the summer and kind of went through the standards ourselves, identified a lot of documents. We have a lot in place, you know, just between the strategic plan, you know, the vision of graduate, the, you know, new curriculum review process. There's a lot that we're doing, our tiered support feedback. So over the last few years, we've had a lot of outside people come in and take a look at what we're doing. And I think we've done a pretty good job of identifying where our needs are. So I anticipate that this is going to mirror the strategic plan and probably reinforce a lot of what we're trying to do anyway.
Any other questions that ready?
It would be great if it's time convenient for you, so we can come back and just give us enough to.
Sure, absolutely. That would be great. And obviously I'll share all the documents with Dr. Stone and with Dr. Collins.
They've made these wonderful vision, vision of a graduate posters that you will see around, keeping it in as a, you know, again, finding your compass, which is a district theme this year is clearly because it's the and it's a, it's really a collaborative effort with the faculty. Every faculty member is involved, correct?
Yeah.
And there are many, many committees. So it's, it's a very strong unifying process for any faculty that will really define the next few years.
Yeah, it's a good time to come in off of COVID and kind of resetting and having our, you know, school group of goals and institutions in place. This will be a good way to kind of recenter everybody.
I know it will be a lot of work. These things often are in any industry, but I imagine with education, it's all about that much more. But it is, as you've already picked up on, you already said, it's great opportunity for reflection and learning. So we are interested, Mr. Carr, what you're, what you're learning as you go through and then also what the recommendations are. We're happy to help out in any way we can.
Yes, I appreciate it.
There's no other questions from the committee? Mr. Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Professor Scott. Great. All right. So we'll, we'll adjust our topsy-turvy agenda back to the top. And I will close off, invite a guest and we'll go into some school updates.
Wonderful. Yes, and I'm saving most of updates for hopefully when Mercedes is able to, to arrive. Mercedes O'Neil is one of our school committee liaisons. Usually at the beginning of October, I get my superintendent student advisory council moving, like to give them the opportunity to settle into the school year before I set point in different directions. But Mercedes, it has, I asked Mercedes to update today. She does have a commitment with volleyball, so she may or may not be able to be here. But I feel like I did a lot of updating last time on the start of the school year. Just suffice it to say, it's continuing to, to go well, you know, as we get more and more into the, the nitty gritty of the school year and academics start to really have their impact on families and students and we, you know, kind of get settled to the pace. We recognize that there's always some adjustment that, that needs to happen in, in, in any student's life as they have a new school or a new grade, new teachers. And so we just remain very vigilant and just again, to offer any assistance we can to any family who might not be having a good experience so far, of course, for the student. We hope that's few and far between. We, we, from our view, feel that the start has, has gone very smoothly, but we recognize the individual experience and all of that. So I just want to make sure that folks know that we have great counselors, we have great teachers and any of us are approachable. And please don't, don't hesitate to, to do that. We did put out a message and I know that Sue will get into this when we talk about the budget, resources and governance section, maybe in more detail if you need it. But our track has moved to the next phase, which is the actual putting down of the track as opposed to kind of setting the foundation for the track. That does necessitate a closing of our, our structure. There are and anything that is in that area. So we did send messages out to the community. We appreciate, and we did also send messages to the school community, but we sent, we sent that information to the town. And I know that the town information communications director, this is her, Justin Shear, will be communicating that. And we really appreciate folks bearing with us as we create a wonderful track for the community and for, of course, our school. So it's just going to take a couple of weeks, fourteen days, so that we, please don't, you know, go onto the track because it could reset us back or actually damage the track. So thank you for that. And then we have a professional development coming up on Friday. I'll let Dr. Stone talk about that. It's a half-day professional development.
It is, and it is part three of our work with Dr. Rehman Porch from the Burlington Public School. So he's continued his work with the cultural responsive and inclusive practices. And we will meet as a secondary and then we have elementary school component. We're really going to look at data and looking at how we can connect that to our look fours that we created around just engagement environment and also our culturally responsive workforce. And, and then our best practices and strategies. So we're excited to have this time with him. I think the staff has been very receptive to, to his style and to his message.
And he really centered us as a faculty on, on elements that Dr. Stone talks about all the time. It's building relationships, explicit instruction and gathering data on how that instruction is going. So that you get a sense for how everyone's doing in the class and then making adjustments to that data. So this is really that next step of, you know, making sure that we have systems in place that, that can gather that data. And that can happen at all levels, you know. It can happen in, in the classroom with a formative assessment. It can happen in a more substantive way with a summative assessment. And then also it happens with all kinds of standardized information that we have across the district, some which are provided by the state, some which we, we're putting into place and creating. So this is a, I think, a really important teaching reminder that very much parts proper cultural response.
Exactly. And it just ties into all our work that we're going to be doing, looking at data, evaluating, analyzing it and doing our practices.
And communicating.
Yep.
So all of that is, so it's a great professional development. One of the things I appreciate and I thank Dr. Stone for this is creating a consistent pattern of professional development, having Dr. Porch back several times. The, the faculty is very comfortable with him. So they're starting to ask questions that a faculty may not ask of a presenter who's just there for a one shot. And also, as everyone knows from who's been involved in professional development, the one-offs just don't really work that well. They can give you some information, but if this is sustained and it starts to become part of our, the way we talk, we, we act in classrooms as faculty and it's definitely impacting me and reinforcing some things that, that I want to make sure I emphasize in the district. Actually, I wanted to keep it, keep it light and really turn to the student's point of view. We have that opportunity, but that's, that's it for school news unless there's any questions from the committee about anything happening. Wonder, I should say wonderful open house. Wonderful open house at Osgood. I, I was able to get the, I had a lot of family commitments on that day, but I was able to be there for the second half. So if your name begins with M through Z, even if it's me, if not, I apologize. But the meeting, the open house at Osgood was wonderful and very centered to that age level. Deer Hill Open House is a little different. It's, it's a little bit more formulated around curriculum. And that's, that's happening on Thursday. And then next week we have our open houses for our middle and high schools, high school first. So we're excited about that. Thank you to all the families who attended.
Yes, and as a D letter, I forgive you. I couldn't get that. That's, that's okay. That's okay. You do, you do a lot for the school. Any questions, comments from the, the committee? So the track will be ready fourteen days from?
Yeah, we, we believe there's been a little bit of weather and there's some weather forecasted. So it could move into the beginning part of October, we'll be very communicative of that. We always knew that a lot of us weather dependent. We did it thankfully from our environmental point of view, we had a few rainy days, but it didn't help us. Because remember, even though they weren't working on our track, they were working on other tracks. So it does, it does delay our work if they have to work, do it there in the midst of another track. So it's suffice it to say, if it rains, it delays our project. And it has rained a little bit and I believe it's going to rain tomorrow. So we're, but the good, good part is that nothing's being delayed right now except for a weather situation.
Yep. That's great. So when that's done, that's when I'll start my fitness routine.
Okay, you promise? That's good. I'll set that down.
We'll have a track again, it'll be good. So then, excellent. So great, thank you. That's, that's all we have for, for school news. Ms. O'Neil has, has not arrived, but I did not begrudge her. She's a very ambitious person with lots of commitments.
She sure is, yeah.
I know she's in the volleyball, she was in the, the other town magazine about the volleyball team.
Yes, it was in Stroll.
Stroll.
Yeah, and they also.
Life on the Rocks, now Stroll.
Stroll, they did a wonderful piece on that. And then they also did a very nice piece on the bus, Ray.
Yes.
And his.
He's a celebrity.
Experience, yeah, we think he's a celebrity. And he's, and, you know, I'm, I'm very proud of the work that Sue and Ray and team have done so far this year. And we're, we're going to continue to improve it, but you did a nice job.
With that, we will close off school updates, barring Ms. O'Neil showing up a little later, which we can, we can come back to that. But, and then we'll move on to teaching and learning. I think our first element there is superintendent goals.
Yeah, superintendent goals. And then I can only, anyone, so we just share my goals. All right, here we go. So I want to thank Mr. Dial and Ms. St. Orange for their work with me on these goals. They're, they're on the, I don't, I don't know if it's called superintendent goal committee, but that's essentially what it is.
What is it?
E-mail.
Super, yeah, super. It wasn't a super nuclear, now it is the school governance committee.
School governance. And it does afford us, it does afford us the, the opportunity to really look at the goals and for the committee to give me input before I present it to you. So as you would expect, my goals fall very much in line with the strategic plan. And as, as such, there are a couple of repetitions in terms of the goal, but not necessarily in terms of the key actions and benchmarks. We should shift as we're moving through a three-year, a three-year process. So the beginning of the, the goal process asks me to list cultural, fiscal and safety indicators that influence my goals. And without opening all of these, you've seen them. This is, and this is a public document which we'll put out there. But the fiscal indicators are our budget presentations for FY twenty-three that obviously, and I can click on any of these you'd like, but I think it might be, you, just to explain what these are. And I know the committee's had a chance to, to dig into this, but just for the public to know. So this, this just shows our budget, budget needs for FY twenty-three. And then our fiscal indicators, we have a ten-year capital budget plan, which we're constantly looking at as a, as a building, I should say, district leadership team. We constantly are looking at where we want to be for our future positions and where we want to be for our capital, what our needs are. And of course, we're aligning that with the strategic plan, but we, we're consistently reviewing it based on data to see what we might need to shift from. But this is our, our latest version of our ten-year capital budget plan. Safety indicators, we have a publishable safety plan, which is on the website. And I put that in here, this is a public document. There's also a manual that we have that guides us a little more intensively with what we do with police. That isn't necessarily for public consumption. We do have many safety protocols and indicators, most of which I put in my newsletter. So anybody has, you know, they're, we're very transparent with it. If you, if you want to look at my newsletter, I have a whole safety section on there. And in there I have protocols around bus accidents, protocols around a potential threat that may happen in a school, keeping in mind that that's a threat. That's when we're not sure if it's a threat. When we are sure it's a threat, the, the police are taking care of it right away. Of course, in any scenario like that, we're constantly working through them. But it does give you a sense of how we're handling it as an administration. All of our bullying prevention protocols are, are in there. And I'm trying to figure out protocols, but there's, there's several safety protocols that you can see that are, that are listed in that, some of which we just created, some of which we adapted, staff, student, if there's an incident with that, that's on there. That's been there for, for a while, but we consistently reflect on that and upgrade as we need to. Then we have some more cultural indicators where we have our inclusive cultures surveys, which still impact the, the middle and high school in their work. And then we have all of the, the family student surveys that were presented last spring as part of the development of the school improvement plans. This coming year, at the request of, and the input of, of some of the school committee members, we're actually going to make this a consistent survey. So all of you will see the same survey. This year, I, I just wanted them to do it in their own authentic way to see how, how families felt we were doing the schools in a variety of areas, particularly community. So that's in here. All the school improvement plans are in there. And as you can see, we've done a lot of work in making them much more consistent than they were several years ago. Our strategic plan is here, which really governs all of my goal development. And then the dashboard summary, which you may have seen me carry around like a big sandwich board all over town because basically I've done that. The statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. It's not a secret. We've advertised that we have a, what's called a senior study visit happening next week. And our school committee representation will be there, as will, you know, people, town representation, select, select folks. And we have obviously our building, building team and our facilities team. And we're going to look at the contents of the statement of interest, which we submitted in the spring to Massachusetts School Building Authority. And we're going to walk through with them the impediments, both from an academic and a facility standpoint that we run into, and we're going to actually tour the, tour the building. So in the midst of that work, but the actual statement of interest is right there. The vision of a graduate, which you can see right here, but we have, we just talked about that. So that is a, that's in there. That, that's what the high schools work with NEAS. A lot of work, a lot of deep diving in there to make sure we're getting the most out of, out of our high school. And then we have a curriculum review cycle, which has been created by Dr. Scollins and other folks working together, which Dr. Scollins is going to highlight today. So that, those I felt were a pretty robust indicators that helped me create my goals. And then just as I have in the past, you know, there's, there's actually the strategic plan dashboard. And then this is my opening letter, which I've shared several times to the, to the community. But it does spell out where, where we're, where we're coming from this year. And that is certainly a, a indicator that helped influence my goals. And you can see it, it talks about curriculum instruction and community partnerships, vision and beliefs, which we're realizing in this new strategic plan. And you'll see all of my goals. And then I get into my goals. Any questions on the indicators or anything that, it's really, I'm following a formula here that the state gives me.
Questions from the, welcome, Mr. Kearney.
Thank you.
The minutes reflect your arrival at six twenty-three, but you gave us a heads up that was coming. Thank you very much. Any questions for the committee? Okay. And Dr. Stone, as we, as we move into the, the goals, I think this will be publicly available, Doc.
Yes.
So we don't, we don't need to go through each bullet point, but if you can give us any additional context or how you're thinking about these goals as, as implementation, I think that'd be, that'd be really helpful.
Maybe what I can do is read the, for the goal and then let you view the key actions and benchmarks. And then I'll ask for any questions about that goal. So there are five goals. And the goals are prescribed, the amount of district improvement goals, the amount of professional practice goals, the amount of student.
Yes.
And they're, they're all prescribed by, by formula, so I'm following that. But I also was really careful at the guidance of the, the subcommittee to make sure that I had all of the, the standards on our strategic plan. So I did five major standards and I, I hit them all in my goals. So it's a completely good thing. So I'll, I'll read the first goal. So the first goal is, and you can see the compass point that it impacts. This is compass point one, teaching and learning. I view this as a major, major goal and I, I also view it as a goal of my counterpart here. We shared goal on this one. But this is, and many of the principals. Throughout the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year, I'll focus the district on the implementation of the elementary comprehensive literacy approach, K to five, middle school science, open SIED program, a computer science pathway, K to twelve, and the curriculum review process, phase one for math, six through twelve, and the arts, K to twelve, and on data that indicates areas of need. So the highlight here is that a lot of the things you see there are there because we've indicated that they are areas of need. Our, our cycle obviously tries to create bite-sized chunks for us because if you're trying to handle everything in, in the curriculum at once in a, in a proper way with teams, you just can't do it with fidelity. So this is, it's carrying on with the work we did in elementary math to now include middle school and high school math. And it's continuing our approach, our literacy approach, which is a deep dive, K to five, and involves a lot of communicating with families now, getting them invested in the process. Open SIED, which Dr. Stone has mentioned, is, is really going to revitalize the way we teach science in middle school. And then we're continuing to build on our computer science and technology components. So I'll just let you review the key actions and benchmarks and then I'll open it up for any questions from the committee on this particular goal.
Just a word of administration, I think we do approve this. We're not slated to vote on it at this meeting. So it was an asterisk at this meeting. So that gives time if you have, after reviewing this, any other feedback, we can incorporate it either for the subcommittee or directly to Dr. Sullivan, who will present this at our next meeting for formal approval. So if, if you want to take a look at this, but don't feel like this is your only bite of the apple to, to comment.
Yeah, we felt that if you, if you'd want to approve a finished document, so if I do get some advice from this team, that I would incorporate that in my goals, bring it back. And then you'd be able to make that type of thing. And again, this has been vetted by, you know, two of the members.
Yeah, the subcommittee did review this and for presentation here today.
Any further questions on that goal?
I'd just like to point out, Dr. Sullivan, that. Sort of follow up to Dr. Scollins' presentation regarding the. BLA curriculum approach at the elementary levels. And have some folks were concerned about that. But we assured them that we're going to be constantly monitoring that. This goal completely reflects that, especially in the second, third, and fourth benchmarks. And benchmarks are obviously designed to monitor progress, and you can see there where not only looking towards, you know, classroom. General data, child specific data, building leadership meetings. But also. Information gleaned from family engagement as well around that area, which will help us, I think, effectively monitor the success of the proposed curriculum shift. And I use the term proposed as it's going to be evolving if we're not finding a solution that's working. Shift or pivot, but for now, we're we're confident that we we sort of put together a mixture that our combinations is appropriate for Cohasset. Students, so I just think it's important, you know, not saying that. This has proven. You know, to work yet, but it just it shows that you're thinking about this as a superintendent. And and that you've actually explicitly incorporated into your benchmarks for monitoring progress of that.
I appreciate that. None of this is static. It's very dynamic. We're absolutely, as you can see, as a benchmark right there on the top, evidence of family engagement, right, to comprehensive literacy. So really.
Two bullets before that too, so.
Correct. Yep, and you'll be seeing, yeah, absolutely. You'll be seeing more of that as we as we go. Yep. You got it. Okay, so lack of questions, we'll go on to goal number two. Goal number two, and this deals with resources. Throughout the two thousand twenty two twenty three school year, I will collaborate with district and building leaders to maximize effective resource allocation. In the areas of staffing, transportation, facilities, learning spaces, technology, and facility systems. Obviously, I should say this has a lot to do with my work with the potential MSBA process. Trying to work with the town to determine what the right path is for us. That's that's going to be a major goal of mine and focus of mine, along with the facilities team. From the school committee that, you know, I I'm going to be spending a lot of time on it, so it seemed like it should be one of my goals, should be a big part of it because it's important. But there's some other factors as well, you know, some some factors involving the way we recruit staff. The way, and we got to remember, like, just the middle and high school, I mean. Best case scenario, we're five, six years away. That's just the fact of potential, I shouldn't say that. But that's probable probable timeline. Well, there's a lot of kids that go to the high school in five, six years, so we got to attempt to then make sure we have the best possible everything for them. As we still fight. Or 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 massive repairs to it. Anyway, you can see them, I'm not going to belabor all the bullets, but you have them there in front of you. And you know, you you see points about our our custodians and our responsibilities with custodians. All of that needs to fall under my supervision, making sure of that. I've done some good work and I've. I saw some of that today, so that's good. We had a nice meeting about that.
Questions from the.
Yeah, I think you guys. First of all, I want to thank you for all the good work that we've been doing around here. I feel really, thank you. I just feel a lot better going to school now. I just, I still see the little things that bother me, but. Honestly, like, in the last month, I can say, and I see a smile on Ted, because I think you feel the same way. I I just think there's a buzz around this place that I'm starting to see some pride. I mean, it's like. It it's 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 really, really good to see. I am concerned about. And I think I mentioned to you this at the facilities meeting this week. I'm concerned of the lack of drive from the. I guess the folks that have kids in the elementary schools now, or or and not to say Craig isn't. In all that. I don't see, and this is concerns me. I don't see like they haven't been waiting with like yes to chat, right? So they did a yes to chat, meaning like everybody on board to get a new middle school, right? And it was parent led. It was a parent led organization, and I've seen it in Rockland. I just don't see it here in Cohasset. I just think that. That everybody sees Deer Hill, right, in Osgood, and then when they get up here, they go, woo! And that was me, right? And I see Craig educating everybody around there to do that. I see I see that. I just don't, I just, this is what concerns me, is that we put all the attention on this school now. And like I said in the meeting, what's what about Osgood? Osgood needs a roof. Deer Hill needs, I mean, we have robot coming out of the cement, out of the ground. I mean, the school needs work. So I'm afraid that we're going to be taking too much attention on high school, middle school. That might not happen, right? It might not happen. I mean, if we can't get them to approve any of these little things, how are we going to get a two hundred million dollar high school? And we have to realize we're only going to get twenty percent of that money. Twenty percent. Waymouth, Rockland, fifty seven percent. And I've been doing my homework here. So it's it's kind of what I'm trying to say is that we really have to get that. That motivation for parents who have younger children in the schools now. Yeah. To look ahead and say, you know, this is what you got to get. To your point, I'm glad you're bringing up the kids that we do have now. We can't put them in trailers. We don't want to do that. So I just think that there needs to be a collaboration of the community saying, and I'm not hearing.
Well, I I would say all that. One of the things that I I and you'll agree with me a hundred percent of this, but the six years I've been here, going on this six year now, or as a superintendent. One thing I'd say for sure is that abundantly clear how much the Cohasset families care about their kids.
Right.
And care about the success of them in 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 the schools. And and I love that. That's why I that's why I want to be here. I I do think there's a there's going to be a time when we need to, now I'll just break your your point into a couple, couple points, but maybe. But there's going to be a time when we absolutely need some energy regarding this building and what we're going to do with this building. And having seen this happen very closely in a neighboring district, right, which I was a part of as administrator. There is a big driving force that comes from families. It really does. And having said that, a new building project. Totally invigorates the rest of the district. It absolutely does. It adds energy, it adds resources, it adds so much to the other buildings as well. But I do I do agree that I think, and I think I'll do my part for sure to just keep. In people's eyes and ears what we need in the schools, and you're doing a nice job of that too, Paul, so.
Yeah, I have kind of ringing that bell a lot.
But the, but you just, I can just jump in. I agree with you. This is a new building project, this community project, and what you're hearing from Dr. Sullivan, and we talked about it at some committee level. Is that we're still focusing on the buildings we have, the students we have.
Right.
And so that that's critical. We're at early stages in the project, so let's let, you know, there's no, there's no pronostication on what the percentage will be, what the MSB, MSBA will do, what they won't do. And, you know, we're not even at a point, you know, where we started really engaging community. And I have every expectation that when we get that vision, when we see what the MSBA has, when we can see where it's, that we will get that, we will get that drive. But for right now, I do want to focus more on this, on these goals.
Yeah, so this is one of them, and I just wanted to bring that point up because we had had that discussion, yeah. And and I don't want to be, listen, I don't, I won't be a donor, just saying, I want to be pumped up about it. Yes. I know who you are. I'm just saying, I want everybody to be.
Yep, and I'll, you got me doing my part. I'll absolutely do that.
It's important we be clear that we have the senior study coming next year. We have not been invited to participate in this. So let's not jump the gun. I I just want to make that clear. We're in an open meeting here. I don't want any wires crossed there.
No, absolutely.
MSBA understands that we understand that we haven't been invited to.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm hopeful.
I I I know, and I think that's what everyone is, but let's not have our optimism, you know, I know. Cavalierly masquerade as as presumption.
Absolutely.
So any other. Committee comments on goal number two? I I will point out, there is one goal, Mr. Kearney, that I thought you would you would very much like seconded. One of the benchmarks was the second last bullet there. Evidence of effort to improve facilities processes. Dr. Sullivan, this getting punch lists, checking out for doors, making surveys, you know, grants, so they've got a process. We've seen examples of that already, so. This is, you know, tangible evidence of your your impact, so. All right, with that. And then we did, we are joined with Ms. Mercedes O'Neill, front of the 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 student advisory council reports. Thank you, Ms. O'Neill. We're going to continue run through the goals, and then we'll come back to your agenda, and I also want to hear about all of them.
Yeah, me too. Excited about that. Haven't seen the match yet. I'm going to. All right, goal number three. So this is compass point two, which is social emotional levels. So throughout the two thousand twenty two twenty three school year. I will empower staff and students through embody equity, cultural responsiveness, inclusivity. Empathy and global citizenship, providing professional development, timely feedback in the area of culturally responsive teaching. Through creating increased knowledge for students regarding diverse cultures and through increasing the inclusivity of the school environment. So obviously, you're seeing some of that in play with our professional development and what we're doing on Friday and what we've done. But you can see a a lot of this has to do with. What are we doing in the buildings to make sure that we emphasize this? It, we've learned a lot about it, but we haven't gone deep enough in each of our buildings. You've seen, I've seen things happen, and Mercedes would probably agree. You've seen like certain groups and certain. Organizations kind of popping up with about diversity, and you have a nice reciprocal situation where you have our high school students going down and working with. The the elementary students. So there's some things that are that are really happening, and and we have guest speakers coming in at the elementary level. But there's more that needs to be put in play, and it really has to do with the individual buildings creating their own systems. So you can see that in here. A lot of it has to do with feedback. And to keep in mind that a good teacher who. Teaches in a culturally responsive manner is an excellent teacher because they're focusing on the important parts of teaching, which I've already said. Are clearly relationship building, explicit instruction, gathering the data, and then doing something about the data. And that that should happen in in every way in our in our classrooms, so we really want to see this get in the rubber with them this year. But you can see our benchmarks here.
Any comments, questions for the committee on goal number three?
The arts. When's that going to start? We're going to get a play around here.
Yeah, well, so we we do. We have a middle school play. It's Moana. Which, yeah, really excited about that. Yep. It's the, you're welcome, play. But anyway. Our curriculum review cycle, which you hear about in a couple minutes, is all about arts this this year. So it's really going to look deeper into arts. You'll hear a little bit more about that when we talk about some future planning.
So let's move on to goal number four.
Will do. Goal number four, throughout the two thousand twenty two twenty three school year, I will cultivate an environment that has to do with compass point four, communication and engagement. Thus, two thousand twenty two twenty three school year, I will cultivate an environment of open communication, engagement, and collaborative learning opportunities among school, home, and existing collaborations. With families and community, and through creating a plan for implementing partnering opportunities. This is a deeper dive to what we've been doing. Continue to build specific plans at each building to further collaborate with community. Essentially, our whole leadership team has this as one of their goals. So what I'm looking at is a plan for each principal about how you're going to do this. And we've already defined engagement as really building things with. Families, not just communicating things with with families. So how are we going to do that? So you can see the key actions. And you can see the benchmarks.
Any questions, comments from the committee on goal four?
I just think the ice cream social is a great idea.
Well, we're eating ice cream with families. But it was, that was, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that's been, that would be one of your goals, and I just think you guys.
Thanks for that. That was that was successful.
Just as a new parent.
Could you state your name for the and address for the.
Aunt Laura Batte, St. Drew's on Road. My daughter's a sophomore. She returned back to Cohasset this year, and the first week was a nightmare. Because the student is in older grade, doesn't mean they know their way around. Nobody was assigned to her as a buddy. So she didn't know where to go. She had no schedule, no Aspen. I called, I started this process in May. So when I see these goals, I'm like, well. Where's the, where's the other kids? Like, how did this kid get forgotten? There's only three new kids in the sophomore year. I had to reach out the night before school. And say, she will get off the bus, she will go to the office, there should be a schedule for her, and a map. Neither. She still doesn't have Aspen. It's just very frustrating. Luckily, she knows a lot of kids. She's on volleyball team, but just because you know the kids, you live in the town. You don't know how to get to a class.
Yeah.
You don't know where the cafeteria is. Where do you sit? Entire school's there, and you're coming back, and it's scary. So I'm just letting you know that might be something you need to have in this.
Yeah, first of all, I'm sorry. I I I can hear, you know, and obviously they came here, so this is something that was.
I always, I always came to school committees when she was there before. That's, I.
No, I I love that.
I want to be part of it. I actually think it's sad that there aren't more people here.
Yeah, well, well, one of the things that I had said earlier in the meeting to start was that, no, although we have seen. Some some things go well in the beginning of the year, we know that every experience is individual. And that is absolutely not okay that your daughter had that experience. And I I I know you said you reached out to the high school, and, you know, I'll 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 also double back about your your daughter to make sure that. You know, you get communicated with and that your daughter gets all the supports that that she needs going through here. Everyone should feel comfortable coming in. We do our best to try to provide tours and to do what we can for students in that way, but if we're falling short.
I can tell you that did not happen. I initiated that. I mean, we can have that discussion later.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, when you're doing these goals, that's something you want to add in. What do we do with new students?
Yeah.
Because just only freshmen aren't who's are.
No.
Are not new students, you know, it's other children who are new students, just, and even in the freshman class, or even the first grade class. This town's a small town, so most of the kids all do go to food and go through school together.
Right.
But that's something, I'm just looking at this, you might want to add in there.
Yeah.
We talked about inclusiveness.
Absolutely, and it might be a a good a good thought for some of my principal goals as well, because the principals really look at making sure that all students. Been in, often you have, and you'll see this in in places where it's a freshman or freshman or new student orientation. So it's it's not just for a freshman, but it might be for a sophomore or a junior or a senior, if they want to partake in that. To make sure that they they feel comfortable. So I guess, yeah, I I hear you loud and clear from a process standpoint, but I'm still struck by the individual experience you had, and I want to make sure I help you.
She's fine. She's fine. My kid's the kind of kid that Mercedes. She's very involved and she'll find her way, but it didn't have to be that.
Sure.
We didn't need that anxiety.
Well, we'll do better next time.
And that's why I brought it up, that that's something you might want to bring with your principals.
Yeah.
Because I think we could get that in a small town.
We can't forget that.
What we do, what I'm saying, in lots of things, not just school, but just with your goals, it might be something you want to put in.
Thank you for, thank you for your being upfront with that. We'll definitely circle back with that.
It's great. It's great feedback, and definitely encourage you to reach out directly to Dr. Sullivan if you have any legacy issues that need to be smoothed out.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, student integration isn't something we've thought about at a at the committee level, and it is a great area of focus, so I think you'll bring that up. And I'm very excited to hear in person. So thank you for coming.
You'll see me in a preschool community that I can come to.
Thank you.
And now if you tell two. And now if you tell two people and they tell two people, pretty soon we'll fill up all these chairs, this is going to be great. So thank you for your, thank you for your comment. So, um, any committee comments for goal number four? I think we're. Um, we're to go number five.
Goal number five, so goal number five is, is compass points one and two. The other two comes down. Throughout the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and I will correct, because I think I put the name of compass points one and two, I should put it in there, I'll, I'll fix that next, next version. Throughout the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, I will collaborate with district and building leaders to create a comprehensive, cohesive, multi-tiered system of supports. Which will better facilitate interventions for students in grades K to twelve. This is a little bit about making sure that we help all students, no matter where they, where they're coming from or what they might be succeeding with or struggling with. Everyone has something and that we're putting, putting things in place, whether it be social, emotional or academic that support all of our kids. So I will let you take a peek at this, this is no surprise here and you'll be seeing this obviously throughout the year as we continue to update on this with, um, Tawanka and, and others.
Wait, what was? Any comments from the committee? Dr. Sullivan, any closing comments on the, on the goals?
No, just that I'm excited to, to, to work them and to, and to work with my team and, you know, that as, as we, as was mentioned, if there are things that come up. Throughout the year that they need to be focused points, we'll, you know, let us know and we'll, we'll make sure we, we attend to them, whether it's at an individual basis or if it's something that is more symptomatic of a bigger issue.
Great, so as a, you know, again, the point of war, we're not being asked to, or we're not voting on these today. But that will be on our agenda for our next meeting. So, uh, community, if you have an opportunity to work with the subcommittee or direct with Dr. Sullivan, if you have any other thoughts, feedbacks, concerns, this will be an early agenda item for next time. With that, we'll close off the superintendent goals and we'll go back to, uh, Ms. O'Neil for the superintendent student advisory council report. Thank you for, for joining after a, after a volleyball game and I've got a packed schedule, so we appreciate you, you making the time for us.
Well, thank you.
So you thought you might update just from a students' point of view about how your start went and about how, how things are proceeding mainly at the high school, but, you know, we, we might have heard other, other input as well.
Okay, so my, we were supposed to have a senior sunrise, the weather wasn't too great. So we had some munchkins in the senior cap, but we actually got to go to the beach another day, so that was good. It was supposed to be a nice day, but then it was cloudy that day too. Uh, but we still had a nice time, we got some good photos. And then also, as you know, I just came back from our volleyball game, we had our first home game yesterday against, uh, West Bridgewater and we won. And then we also, tonight was the freshmen's first game, we have a JV and freshman team. Unfortunately, we didn't win, but they put up a fight and it's good, and so I think they'll be ready for next time.
Awesome.
Yeah, and then I'm trying to think of, oh, today, um, Spanish club had a fiesta. So students went in there and had some salsa and we played some games, there was, um, an indigenous game that we played, which included like rocks and then you guessed which hand it was in. So we got quite a good gathering in there, that was fun. And for me personally, this year, it started off good, I'm happy with my teachers and I'm excited to finish off my last year here strong.
That's great, that's good, you've certainly done a strong, strong work. I should mention, this is Hispanic Heritage Month. I forgot to put that in my notes, I'm going to put that in this one coming up. Awesome, that's great.
Right now, I'm sure we'll have plenty of other events happening.
That's right, are you feeling that kind of a, your academics are starting to move a little bit?
Yeah, definitely, I have some quizzes coming up, so it's right back into it.
Hang in there.
Yeah.
It's, I always feel like the beginning of the year for everyone involved with the school, whether it's a, certainly for students, but, you know, staff, families. It's a drain, it's an energy drain, there's a lot of emotion, there's a lot of things happening and there's a lot of transition, it's constant transition, right? Teachers, new friends you're with, new experiences, the curriculum, the grade level, you name it, everything. So it's, you know, you just gotta keep working at it, keep, keep going on and, and reach out if, if you need anything, so. And I appreciate your, your perspective.
Any questions from the committee?
How was, how did you play your first volleyball game at home under, going through that whole process, it's a pretty big victory, right?
Yeah, we worked really hard to get our team started, our sweatshirts came in.
Yeah.
It feels good.
Looks great.
It, it felt great, oh, you guys should come to our game.
I'm gonna come to the game.
Yeah, we wore it today.
And who are your coaches, um, because I'd like to give them a shout out.
Um, so our head coach is Simi Kusbenson and then we also had Ms. Daisy. And then we have a teacher from, I, I know where I was calling.
Ms. Gibson?
Ms. Gibson, yeah. We got some good ideas.
Yeah, I saw Ms. Gibson, um, going into practice and she said, this is like the best thing going, and she was loving her experience.
Yeah, it's incredible, cause a lot of the girls, it's their first year playing with the freshmen, they're doing great, like it's going so much better than we could have hoped.
That's good. And you know, you're, you're a real, a leader founding this too, that's, that's a nice experience.
I'm co-captain with Taylor Silverberg.
We should give credit to Taylor's mom as well.
Oh, yes.
The driving force.
Completely, completely, and, um, you know, your, your, her work is, is, is showing fruit here and then you had a nice article in the Stroll magazine, so that we talked about that earlier.
Eighty-five percent participation in sports.
Yes, very high percentage.
In the cross-country one today, the girls soccer one just today, they beat home.
Yep, that sports team's doing wonderfully.
Cross-country play.
Yep. Was able to see field hockey play, was it last night? It was last night and they, they, they beat Middleborough, so it was nice, nice to see that. Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of great things, I mean, we, we're, we're very successful with our athletics, so we're doing well, so.
Knowing you Mercedes, you're considering college, I, I agree, so are you, you have some, I imagine the application deadlines come up fairly quickly.
Yeah, they are coming now, I'm working on my Common App and college essay, getting all that stuff in.
Give us PTSD.
Enjoy the process, you know, you've.
I'll try to.
No, I mean, can you stress that, but the college, the, the place you end up going, we're lucky to have you and it's, um, you know, you, you should get into some good places, I think you're gonna have a nice, nice experience.
Dr. Sullivan had to use an actual typewriter to fill out his.
I did, yeah. Chair of the club.
On Parkland.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, I'll let you go, thanks for coming in, I know it was, it was a tough, uh, to squeeze this in, so we appreciate it.
Good luck on your quizzes.
But Mercedes, thank you.
All right, we'll, we'll switch back into the, uh, to the, to the, continue our teaching and learning element with the update from Dr. Sullivan on the curriculum review cycle. This is, I think, is an important initiative for the school and I think it's exciting to hear about it.
Yeah, so I did make you a co-host.
So, um, this was a process that we've been working on for a while, we got some things that, that interrupted us a little bit around, you know, pandemic and things like that. However, I'm really fortunate that we were able to finish this up last year and then over, the end of the school year and then do some other work over, over the summer. I will say that I want to give credit to a lot of the towns, if you look at the very last page. Many towns have shared their curriculum review processes and every time someone takes it, they add obviously their own towns flair to it. We also collaborate and share it back, right? So when I, when I took this, I made our changes that reflect our needs here in Cohasset and then I shipped it back to, um, to the people that sent it to me.
The irony is you created a kind of a marshmallow.
Exactly, yeah. I, I know, I was just saying, but, but, you know, but like Chrissy Fruit over in Easton, she did a lot of work, so she was the last person to have her hands on this particular document. So this is really a compilation of many towns and so I'll just kind of take you through, um, through our process, process that we have in place. So, um, it is. Um, and so the first couple of pages are really kind of the introduction of our curriculum review process and it's closely tied to our strategic plan, if you look at our mission, our vision, empower students to improve communities, our core values. All of this is taken from our work, um, our strategic plan, right? Because everything needs to be connected, right? All of our goals need to be connected to our strategic plan and, and then obviously this process also. And one of the most important things about this is really making sure that we have a curriculum that's aligned pre-K through twelve and that we look at all different facets of the curriculum. And then here is the overview of the curriculum process and we begin it this year, it's a five-year curriculum review cycle. The first year is the self-study and that's the analysis of the current curriculum and development, uh, and the development of an action plan. This is probably the most laborious of phases, because this is where we sit down and we look at everything we have, we look at our data, we look at what we're currently using for practices. We research what are the best practices that are out there. And then we look at what our needs are and that includes budgetary too, what are our financial needs? Um, and then, um, the following year is the second, um, year of the cycle and that's develop and redesign. So development and the revision of the curriculum. That first year is really just the collection and analysis of it. Um, and then the third, which is actually two years, is the implementation and the monitoring of the curriculum. And then the fourth is to evaluate, look at our data, look at our learning outcomes and we, and I did build in some learning outcomes in our process. So that we have some tethers, um, and so this is the overall process. Now, as we go through the process, there can be some tweaking in these phases that happen as we're doing, since it is our first year doing it. We could find that there's some things that we want to tweak along the way, but this is the basic outline of it. Um, and then it shows really why it's important to have a curriculum review process. Right, that clear articulation, pre-K through twelve, it allows us to have ongoing revision and review of our curriculum. It supports the use of our ongoing assessment data to inform and, and improve. I think that's the piece that's happening, um, but I think we need to build that out more and be more consistent, so this is going to allow us to do that. It ensures that our revisions and updates to the curriculum and instruction and assessment take place. Um, and they are connected to and adhere to any changes in this type of federal mandates as well as our curriculum frameworks, because that's obviously something we need to make sure is happening. We want to make sure that our curriculum is culturally responsive, unbiased and inclusive. And so that everyone can see themselves in that and that we're making sure that we have a very representative view of, of any of the things that we're doing. Um, and then it outlines a planned approach towards researching and budgeting for expenditures, because, you know, it's basic, you need funding to make things happen. And it also allows us to make sure that we have the best curricular materials and the best professional development that will help us grow. And then the evaluation part of it, um, to really be looking at what are the curricular changes that we need to make and how does that impact and support our student? Um, and the process that we are going to use, and this has been in the district long before I got here, was the use of backward design. And basically backwards design is looking at where do you want your students to be in the end? What's your plan to get them there and how do you know you got them there, right? So that's really kind of the, the very simplified form of it. But it's a, but it's a very thorough process on making sure that our, um, that all our teachers are using this kind of design model. And along with that will create some consistency around lesson plan design and unit design and that, uh, all teachers are doing it, but everyone has their own style. Out of this process, we'll be able to kind of reboot, um, what's happening in those areas. Any questions about that yet? All right, and then the roles and responsibilities, so this is the curriculum review committee, CRC. And this is, uh, made up of district leadership and I will, I will be facilitating this process. Doesn't mean that there aren't going to be other people that will be working with me and other point people, but it is our first time going through it and I certainly wouldn't give this to someone else to do. Um, so anyway, so I will be doing that, principals will be involved or assistant principals and same for, um, the elementary schools. And there will be a curriculum review committee that involves, depending on what the content is, right? But our department chairs will be involved and our math and reading specialists, if it is their content area, that's a requirement for this. And then we will have teachers and minimally two per school, it would be nice to have one per grade level, but we are a small district and so it can be a large impact. The good news and the bad news of being small, um, is that if you take all the teachers, then there's nobody to teach during the day. But there's also ways to go back in and really connect with all the teachers. So even if we only had maybe two per school, those teachers are responsible to go back to their colleagues and really do some work at the, at that level and bring it back. And of course, we'd have special education teachers, we would have other teachers, art, music, depending on what, what the needs are. And it just kind of shows really what the responsibilities of all of those roles are, um, that we, a principal or assistant principal as a point person. Cause we need to have all of these perspectives as we're moving forward. And you can see at the very bottom, it really gives us a quick, um, review of the, that self-study phase. So there'll be some reviewing of the curriculum that already exists, review of culturally responsive bias and inclusivity, collecting and analyzing data, I kind of said this to you, but then they'll write a self-study review document and then an action plan for the next step. And then, um, each step is then, um, written out with more detail, so you can see that this takes really pretty much a year to complete. In every, uh, in this, in this, um, phase, so you can see, we're going to develop essential questions that focus the self-study, review the district's curriculum and instructional resources and conduct the self-study. And then it's been broken down into what you're going to do, so we're gonna have a phase of data collection and analysis. And we're gonna make sure we stay true to our vision. What we want our students to know at the end, I'm gonna look at the written curriculum, we're gonna look at, um, those essential questions and during understanding, we do a little bit of educational language. But, um, really looking at what exists and are we aligned to the state frameworks? It just kind of takes that super dive and if you look here at the very top, really looking at, um, creating. Some very, um, specific areas that we want to be thinking, making sure that we have inquiry and problem solving for higher order thinking, cross-disciplinary learning, authentic learning opportunities, technology enhancements in student agency. So these are just some of the things that we'll be keeping in mind. We'll look at instruction, what's trick, what is the taught curriculum, review that, look at our assessments on our learned curriculum. And also see is it aligned? Are we getting what we need? And then resources for, um, for learning and school culture, those are important pieces, review the existing curriculum. And then that review document, writing that up and that will have an executive summary statement. Curriculum overview findings and staff, staff parent and student data, so along the way, we will be collecting, um, information from families also. So there's a variety of ways we'll do that, but that will be up to the committee on how, how we do that, but it could be surveys, um, it could be focus groups, it could be, um. You know, what's materials, as we move into the other phases, having parents give feedback on the resources that we are talking about, so, um, so we'll build that in, that's a very important part to what we do. I think, um, we'll make sure that we do that, it's just, it's part, it's, I wish I had specific details, but I think as we go through the process, we'll get better at knowing how to do that. And then also collection, you can see, collecting data, teachers continue to look, so, um, and then at the end, we'll have a formal report of action with recommendations, including timeline and budget. And so we do have a timeline. Do this, so emails going out, um, to the whole staff, to for volunteers for, um, the two phases, and I know Dr. Sullivan already said it, um, the two content areas that we'll be working on is math. Even though our focus is six through twelve math, it's still going to include elementary math, because it has to be part of the conversation, it's just that we've already implemented, right? For the phase, yes, for phase one, sorry. For the phase, yes, for phase one. Sorry, this year, phase one will be in math and then the arts. And then you can see how we chunk it out. In each content area, we'll have their own team. And then here's phase two, which is to develop and redesign the curriculum. Phase three, we'll implement that and monitor it for two years. And then we'll evaluate, see how things are going, look at our data. Is it what we think? And then we'll make adjustments because then following you, you go right back into that self-study. Any questions about that?
One thing to note is that this also helps us align our budget and needs as well. So as we get into it and we know that a big curriculum change might happen, it's going to be an investment. Then we'll, we'll obviously tend to that and make sure that that is noted as we ask for a budget or as we budget for future things. So it's important to have our budget cycles kind of coinciding with our curriculum review cycle. So you don't have, well, we kind of ran into, because we didn't have this. We ran into the need for elementary literacy curriculum and elementary math curriculum at the same time, both costly. Yes. So we were able to make adjustments around it, but you don't want that to happen. You want to have it so that you're really reviewing things at different times. So it balances out to a better process and it's also more fiscally responsive.
Yeah. And what's nice is that this process will definitely support what the high school is doing. And the high school is going to support us in this committee. So. And then just the appendix, please.
Anything for the committee? All right. Any questions for the committee? I know, I'm sure my column, you want to jump in, but Mr. Carter, anything for it? Mr. Kearney? Everyone's excited.
Yeah, I just want to yield my time to Craig, please.
All right. Vice Chair McCollum, please be a good steward of Mr. Kearney's time.
Thank you. That is a very simple question. We also, we fluctuate between having sort of open forum ability to ask questions and then going to the I know it's just a chaos right there. So I'm not sure. No, I just, I just don't know. Sometimes, so I was just as a condition stimulus, and I was ready to participate spontaneously. Doc Scones, could you just, once you form the CRC, you update us as to who is on it? Because I would be curious to know which faculty members are on.
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, I think too, yes, for volunteers, but sometimes there's people out there that when you have conversations with them, they're really excited to do it. You know, so sometimes this, you know, we'll have a nice group. I'm not worried at all.
Okay, good. Yeah, because after strategic planning sessions, I'll be interested to see who, which faculty member we have on the CRC.
Well, and I'll tell you this. So I think that things are different now. I think people are over, over the stresses that, there's still stress. We all lived through a pandemic. So I don't want this counting me as that. But I do think that people do feel a lot better. I think we feel it. And so as you know, from the elementary literacy perspective, we were rolling out Reader's Workshop in three through five. Because we had the materials, we were able to really make it a smooth transition into that. Because there were some delays in some of the materials for the K through two. So on the first couple of days of our professional development, I think the second day, we had our consultant from Teaching Learning Alliance, who's doing the embedded professional development for literacy, come and speak with the K through two, just kind of talk through what was happening. And we had already decided between Principal Farrell, myself, and our consultant, that we would offer any, just put it out there, if you would like to be an early adopter, because there are materials that we could do around Reader's Workshop. And if you'd like to be an early adopter, we would love to work with you and we'll make that happen. And then the following year, we're going to roll it out completely for everybody. So we said, if you could just let us know in the next week and a half, and there's no pressure, if no one wants to do it, that's okay too. This is really driven by the teachers and the majority of our teachers asked if they could be those people.
That's great.
So it's kind of a long, kind of winded answer, but I do think that there's a lot of excitement and enthusiasm to make a difference. And people want to make sure they have the right materials and they're doing, that they're doing what they need to first.
Yeah, I mean, it's an ineffably important process, right? So I just want to, that's great. Good to hear. Great. If you just let us know, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Huge step for us.
Yeah, so that's great. So any questions?
So from my perspective, I applaud your effort. This is a giant undertaking, bigger than I actually thought it was when I saw it on, when we initially talked about putting on the agenda. So this is great. I do like the idea of having clarity, looking forward and having a strategic plan for curriculum and a strategic review. And I'm also very happy that we'll continue keeping the school committee apprised and up to and including presenting the study. I may, that's very key. The only thing I'd offer at this point is, you mentioned communication. And if you could utilize the school community's communication subcommittee as a sounding board and a place for ideas on how to do that. We also have great parent-led organizations for the PSF that would be interested in this process as well. So those are ideas. So great. Nothing to do here from the committee on that. So with that, I think that closes off the curriculum reviews cycle.
It does.
Moving on to our next bullet point, we have a follow-up regarding student services notifications. It's been something that's come up kind of repeatedly in prior meetings. So Dr. Scollum, I'll turn it over to you.
Absolutely.
Well, I'll just mention the idea, well, we certainly took that seriously. And it was, it was, just to remind you what this is.
No, I do. I had something in my head that I'm I have something else pulled up. But no, but I'm happy to speak with you. So I meet with the math specialist and the reading specialist, K through eight. And we meet every month separately, together, and we meet a couple of times together. But I asked all the principals and they all had said, yes, there was process to notify families. And then when I met with the reading specialists and the math specialists, we talked about it. So we were gaining some consistency on how that's going to happen. So, yes, I wanted to do that. It's so important. And they really
breaks my heart when you start at eight. It's not nine to 12 when you say math specialists. It's just
But I do have the department, but just so you know, the department heads do come to that too. So and they are six through 12. So Karen McGinnis and John Fordham both
Which are great.
So they come, so they're, you know, so I hear you though. I hear you.
Right? We still need math specialists. You know, I'm going to throw that.
We need the last one.
Yeah, no, I'm 100%.
Next time, we could maybe say K to 12. Yay.
We have a curriculum review process, so that's going to help us.
Bring it up.
Yep.
Math specialist, math specialist.
All right. So great. Thank you. That's helpful to those in the community who are listening. That's, you know, us being responsive to you as an administration, as a committee. And, you know, if there are situations where communication has not been to your liking, or you felt you were left behind, definitely reach out. This is a sensitive issue for all of us. We want to make sure we get that right. So with that, I think we close off our teaching and learning agenda. We do. Great. All right, moving away from the students and into the schools, budget, resources, and governance. Dr. Sullivan, I think you're first on the agenda here with some planning for the future.
Absolutely. So in organizing the agenda, I felt it was, it would be productive to have conversations regarding how, what are we looking at for the future in terms of our needs, in terms of our vision, in terms of our desires for positions? And what can you expect moving forward in terms of discussions at the committee level? And then obviously our planning as a leadership team. And we thought we'd break it up into kind of conversations and some discussions in three areas. The first area being teaching and learning, which we'll talk about. You know, we're not going to really hit everything, but we'll talk about some of the major pieces that we're looking at and get some input, knowing that we don't want to stretch it out for hours. And then the second, which will be next meeting, will be student services, because we do have Mrs. Solanka coming to do her update. And we'll be able to update our needs moving forward in the student service area, which is a very broad area. And that deals with not just special education, of course, but anything we do for students to help them. And then finally, the following meetings, this is going to be over three meetings. We're going to talk a bit more about finance and facilities, specifically facilities improvements. And obviously Sue will play a big role in that. So and this, I'll just mention some of the things that we've been talking about. And I did present some of this earlier in the summer in sort of a more of a higher level format. And this is still pretty high level, but it at least gets us to think about some of the things that we feel we need based on data we've looked at. But also based on what some of the other districts around us have that we don't have currently. And the first area, and you'll be happy to hear this, and this isn't in any order, it just happens to be what I have on the page. But Mr. Kearney is in the area of math and reading supports. We absolutely, as we know, obviously, we're coming off of a pandemic nationally. And in Cohasset, we're seeing a need for resources to help our students fill in gaps. And then also to to meet the needs of, you know, what they need anyway. So this is going to involve teachers, it could involve some tutors, it could involve specialists, and certainly instructional materials, including technology. And, you know, we've thought of some rough price tags for it, but I don't know if that's appropriate to talk about at this stage. But, you know, we, these are, all of what I'm mentioning today, we discussed as a leadership team. And so, you know, we do know that's going to be a focus area. Early numeracy and early literacy are two of the more important things we do. They are so fundamental and foundational to everything our kids do that if we don't account for that. But just making sure that it follows all the, as you said, all the way through grade 12. And that we're providing kids with supports and meeting every kid where they are, which is why this is really, in my view, an FPS issue. Secondly, one of the things that definitely came out from our facilities review with AI3, but we know it, is that we have a lack of vocational options here at Cohasset. Now, obviously, we're not a comprehensive middle school, comprehensive high school, which there are schools in the area that do have that, which means they don't pay into a vocational school. We do, we pay social, a VOTAC. However, we still should be offering some, some basic and even more than basic vocational opportunities. One of the things I talk about, we're a coastal community. We have great resources, natural resources that we could be using more in our schools. You know, we do some great collaboration with Cohasset Coastal Student Coastal Research. But we should be doing some of that here and really still partnering with them. But having it more to inspire students who have grown up on the coast, who want to actually go into the business of something to do with the coast, whether it's improving the environment or working in the fishery, whatever it might be, industries. Also, our consumer science, you know, teaching students how about the importance of nutrition, food, and how to be a chef and how to run a business around food, these things, they're not hard to create. You just have to create the space and you have to create the structure to do that. So and others too. Obviously, there's a lot of technical aspects, the technical drawing, a lot of things we can towards design without becoming a fully comprehensive high school, just enriching the experience of our students. And that's going to involve teachers, and that's going to involve some instructional materials and
We do have some going on. My daughter built a desk, sorry, a table. She's so excited about it. It's in my living room right now.
Yeah. No, I don't mean to minimize what we have.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying like that was like to your point about like her with a hammer.
Now she's missing a lot of things.
Fix it. Yeah, you got my drill?
We, oh, completely. He's Thank you for saying that, actually, because that's not the impression I wanted to give.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to reinforce that.
Thank you. We just want to, you want to drill that. We want to do more.
It's good stuff.
At all levels, really.
Especially you talk about the chef and we talked about that with nutrition, about like possibly hiring a chef. And that would be a good stifling for them, because our kitchen is beautiful. And we have a beautiful kitchen that anybody would want to have in their commercial kitchen.
It's a great
So I think that, honestly, my son makes cinnamon rolls from scratch. He makes Italian bread from scratch. He makes lemon cookies. Because I sent him to chef's school. And we did that at an early age, and they make their own ones. They learn how to cut up with plastic knives. You know, instead of the real knives. But it was a really good learning experience that he's going to have his whole life.
It's a great learning experience. And it's a good one at the middle school level too, and even somewhat in the elementary. So there's a lot we can do to enrich our kids' experience. Speaking of bringing things in earlier, elementary foreign language, world language, however you want to title it. We really need to, I think we're disservicing our kids at this point if we're not moving in that direction. So and that includes making our high school into a situation where we can offer a more consistent and consecutive foreign language experience across the four years of high school. So there's a, there's a lot, there's a lot to grow in Cohasset. This is an area that was clear to us when we got here. And you'll be seeing this over the next several years, building a program to do that. That's going to involve from moving down to the elementary level, at least hiring specialists and probably some staff to help teach that and teach the exposure to elementary languages. There's good models around us. King does a fabulous job, for instance, in doing that with their students. There's a lot of models we can, we just have to build the capacity to do it. That's going to involve, obviously, teachers and instructional materials. And then similarly, building out our computer, computer science pathway. We've started that process. We've actually been looking at it. We've allocated some of our staff to do new things. And we're going to continue to build that. And you'll see in our requests moving forward, more pointed positions in the area of computer science, moving up to some AP offerings that we should be, we should be doing here. We're not doing. So that's something we'll be seeing. Expanding our project-based learning. That's going to be a lot more professional development than it is a position. Because it's just, it's just an approach to make sure that students are experiencing authentic audience and that they're really, they're really working on a project and problem-based curriculum. So you're going to see more of that in requests. Expanding our elementary science resources. You know, we're doing this open SIAID at the middle school, and that's really imparting our training with our middle school group. But we really need to look at, you know, what kind of lessons are our elementary teachers offering our students? And they do a nice job, but can we help them with that? Can we potentially have a science specialist who comes and goes and helps with curricula and actually helps design lessons with them in science? Sometimes says, I got it. I got the floor here, and teaches a lesson in science in these classrooms. What a great experience. We did have a couple of years ago, someone who did some of that with us. She did some embedded PD. Her name was Dr. Love.
Love, yeah.
What was her first name? Jennifer?
Jennifer, thank you.
Production. She was fantastic, but of course, she moved on to other things. But having that as a position would be fantastic. And it's not without peer around us. We have a lot of districts who have science specialists at the elementary level. And not only do you see that in our standardized test scores, which isn't to be an end-all, but you start to see that play out in their love for science. And that's what we really want to do is inspire them in that way. Speaking of inspiring, expanding our music programming. We've talked a lot about what that might look like. It would look at our, it should be allowing kids to pursue strings orchestra. We don't have that here. We should be creating an environment that allows for kids to have opportunities to be instructed before and after school in, and it's my son, we live in a neighboring town, and I never, my son plays the saxophone. And he's a middle, sixth grader. I've never seen the kid play the saxophone, but every morning we, that's my own fault, by the way. But every morning, it's his fault, but it's sort of my fault too. But every morning, when he goes in, or at least a couple of times a week, and plays in the morning and stays one time after school. And wouldn't you know it, I saw him in performing, get up and did a little solo, and I was blown away by it. Because he was getting that instruction. And he says to me, Dad, I play every single day. Like, I don't see it, but Like I don't see it, but he's doing it, it's just because they've created a system of doing that, we should be doing that here at Cohasset and offering that for our kids. And expanding health and wellness, right now, we have a point eight teacher in health and wellness at our Deer Hill School. We don't have any health at our elementary school. So it would be nice to be able to branch out and do more at both schools. And by the way, that point A, we could split it, but I felt like basically what we did at both schools, when we had that model. I felt like both schools weren't getting anything, thinking little to nothing and focusing on one school gave it more oomph, I stand by that. But we should have more health opportunities there. Expanding our culturally responsive teaching resources, that's going to continue to, to evolve over, over the years. Also, expanding our preschool program. We have a great opportunity to mirror what we have right now in, in a room across the hall. I think that would be fabulous, it's also a revenue builder for us because we do, is, we do charge folks for preschool. And I, I do believe that's, that's appropriate, I, I don't believe it's appropriate in kindergarten, but preschool I, I do. And that would be wonderful, a great, a great way to, to infuse that, that early experience for more students. And I believe we'd, we'd have.
I think we would, and it would help us to identify students that may be at risk too. You know, it doesn't mean that preschools around aren't doing a great job, they are, it's just, we're just a different, a little bit of a different. Format and programming, so it would allow us to really, you know, key in on students that we thought might be at risk.
It would lead to a more enriching, more enriching kindergarten experience.
Completely.
As well, because I think we'd have most of the district participating in it.
I think we would.
And they would hit the ground running and there'd be cohesion between pre K instructors, head practitioners, Mrs. Farrell. And K instructors in terms of student monitoring and. And pairing with the right teachers, the right classmates, it, it, it would be, it would improve our K program, not only the overall district.
I believe so, and some of the data that would, I think, lend its hand to agreeing with that would be the kindergarten jumpstart program. This summer, and we had nearly a hundred families who were in that, I mean, and that, that, that did a lot. From what I'm hearing, to help kindergarten students transition. Imagine if they're there for preschool, I mean, that's just, you're really hitting the ground running. And, and you know, it's, that's a young, young age, so you need to be mindful of what's right for your, your own child. But to have it as an offering, I think would be important, I think you can, you'll see that being asked of the committee. For support sooner than later. Also, right now, we have a situation where we're lucky because we have wonderful people doing this, but we do not have. We have E S Ps essentially teaching technology at our elementary level. And so the elementary offerings aren't taught by certified technology teachers who are being looked at in that way, they're, they're excellent. But we should be, we should be upping that and, and keeping the E S Ps, you know, to help and support that. Same thing with library, we should really be mirroring what we have here, a library media specialist or something to that degree at each level. Would, would that some work to be done, we should think about what that means, we have wonderful librarians, fantastic librarians, and by the way, fabulous technology instructors. But we just need to make sure that we're providing in those areas what we're providing in every other area. Which, you know, is, is our, our teachers in that position, so. And then our technology needs, which definitely add to instruction and we've done a great pilot. Where we've looked at our panels and, you know, clearly what we're working on right here, the view sonics and these need to be. Put into rooms and they need to be used and mounted on walls when appropriate, so that we can have interactive solutions with technology. We're behind on this and we need to catch up and that's going to come with a price tag, some of that I think you'll see us asking for capital, but some, you know.
It's a necessary tool and our teachers need it.
Right, and then, and then we'll, we'll see how everything else shapes out, but some more folks directing. What all the things I just talked about, you know, the possible idea of a director of STEM and a director of humanities. Work under Dr. Scollins to help with some of this. It's, it's a, it's, it's present in other places, it pays off, these are K twelve positions. A D E I, which is a director of equity inclusion, which the state is really, I've always believed, and I've said this publicly, that everybody should own a piece of it. But possibly if they show the piece of it, we should have a D E I, the state is actually telling us that. So it's something we may have to consider moving forward as a district. More conversation on that, we're not there right now, but these are things to, to talk about. And then, you know, we do have some large, pretty large elementary schools, even though we're a small district, they're, they're not small elementaries. A lot of districts have many more elementaries because they're a bigger district, but the size of the school itself isn't any different. They just have five or six of them in their district as opposed to one. Well, those schools often have assistant principals at the schools that, that take on the role of helping to evaluate. Helping with everything that, it's a lot of a principal if you have a, you know, four or five hundred kids school with all that staff to do everything. Not impossible, are, are, and I'm not saying, and I'm not telling you where all these lie in priorities. But that's something down the road I think we need to explore and think about. And that's something that our, our leadership team is, is discussing, but just know when we, when we talk about all of these, you know. We understand that this isn't all going to happen once. And we know that there's a lot of conversation and back and forth to determine when it should happen and when we should get it. But I just think we need to continue to talk about what we need. And if we don't get it out there and we don't keep advertising, you know, the, the fact that we're not, we're not complete yet. That we just won't grow as a district to the degree we need to grow.
And if we don't tell people, they don't know what we need.
That's right. So this is part one of a three-part process that, you know, we're going to continue to do more thoroughly as we move on. But I thought I should at least start off by talking about teaching and learning, you know, this is created by us, so.
I have a question, is the preschool still lottery?
Yes, for the, for the peers, yes, yes.
So.
How many children, how many children are?
There's twelve, there's twelve in each session, there's twelve in one, twelve in the other.
So we grow that, we double it?
Go, I'll do the committee worm, Mr. Carr.
I think you used the term point eight teacher, can you explain?
Yeah, well, it's a whole person. But it's a point eight, so if you look at a one point O position salary to be full-time.
Yes.
They actually only teach a point eight of a day essentially, a point eight of a, I should say, point eight of a full schedule. So which means that they teach, you know, depending on how we divide it, what do you say?
I mean, four days.
Four days a week.
Four days a week, or eighty percent of it.
It can be broken up differently, but they're not, they're not coming in like a full. Contractually, it's point eight of the hours that a one point O teacher would, would teach contractually.
Great.
It was great. Stupid answer, but a great question.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you, thank you, thank you for just bringing this all up, because I've been saying that for years that we're underfunded. Chris Sale makes more money than the whole district and he's the lousiest pitcher ever seen. Twenty-five million dollars is our budget, it doesn't go a long way with two hundred and eighty people. And every, I, I, I just feel like everybody needs help, I feel like Steve Rattan did, he's doing a lot. And he's got a whole, without help, and I see in. Nobody has help, I mean, there's no human resources to buy, I, I don't know any company that exists, I mean, I have a small company, but I have resources.
You'd be hearing about that in the facilities board.
Yeah.
That's part three.
My point is this, I think that if we can come together as a collaborative understanding of what we need now, right? Because you're telling us what we need now and that needs to be funded and then later on, what we're going to need for the future. But right now, the resources for the stuff that we can establish, and I know you guys spent some time putting together a proposal of like. What if we were in a perfect world? And I just think that we need to expand on that and kind of advertise that. So what I'd like to see from you, Dr. Sol, is try to engage the parents to understand what we all know. I only wish that half the parents knew what I, and sometimes I wish I didn't know so much, you know what I mean? Because on this committee, we're in, we, we know a lot of stuff that other parents don't know, some of it good, some of it bad, right? Some we can share, some we can't. That said, I just think that like, how do we get them to like go out there and advocate for their children? And understand this, and with all respect to the parents around here, all of us pretty much have two jobs. So it's like, we're all so busy, wrapped up in our own lives, that we don't really have time to come up here and advocate. And if we don't do that, we're never going to get done what you're asking us to do. And, and what you're asking for is not a big ask, but it is a big ask, we're asking for, and I think sometimes that. Our children are, like, as, as one of the, as somebody had said to me, you know, we're lucky because we can. We have one of the best students around, these, these parents come in, they're hardworking parents, they bring us good kids and we can be mediocre and get away with it. But then our teachers don't want to be mediocre, they want to, they, we've got some talented kids here that are going to be doctors and lawyers and could be astronauts, who knows? I mean, it's, these are, these are the things that we, like to your point about like before and after school programs. Like get them in there, get some stifens and get this thing going.
Yeah.
Because our kids are lacking, they had two years of, of really, really bad experiences and we need to catch up. And we need money to do that, and I just think they needed to hear from you more.
Yeah.
Because I say it everywhere I can.
And, and I should say, like, a lot of these things are, are starting and bubbling, like for instance, our, our Stephanie Moriarty, our director. Music sixty twelve is working to create these opportunities, but I don't think we're supporting her enough to do it. Like that's, it's not a reflection on her, it's, it's a reflection on the support we're providing her and that's, that needs to come with. Some, you know, some money or, or some, some resources that, that, that help staff those things. It's not, it's not her, she's, she's great and just doing what she can, and that, and that really reflects a lot of this. It's not, it's not the people who are teaching at the elementary level technology, they're incredible, they're doing a great job. It's that we should be supporting the district more with that position.
Yeah, and, and.
That's all I'm saying.
Also too, Craig did a good job with trying to find a way to get technology in here, when I, when I give his chair, thank you for, for that. I just think it's, it's always like, people don't understand, like we needed a nurse at our middle school, we didn't have one. Kids had to walk a mile, take a, their cart, I mean, it was like, you're sick and you got to walk a mile and we didn't have a nursing station. So it's, it's kind of like, we just got to kind of educate people on that, they need to talk to the select board. And we need a serious conversation about raising taxes in this town. And getting the facilities and the committees to get together, to come up with ways to tell them that what we need is important. And let the, let the voters decide, I think we're all afraid to say, hey, they're never going to do it. And to be honest with you, I've been on this committee the longest here and when I first got on the committee, it was always about like ways we can't do things. And I'm just so excited and I thank everyone here because it's like, we're finding ways how we can do things. And that's the biggest difference that I've seen in the last forty years, is, is everybody's, no one's saying now, oh, we can't do that. Or giving, giving words such as like, I used to hear with, with, with the parent teachers conference as well, you can always email the teacher. I mean, that's just the answer that we get, but no, we changed that and that's just another way of, of getting things done, so. You know, I, I appreciate and I applaud what you're doing, I just would like to see more of like banging the, the drum to the, to the people like parents. They need to, they need to be the voice of their children and those, these are the things that we need.
Yeah, so, thank you for saying that.
Mr. Kearney, to your point, that is why this is a big item.
And thank you.
And vice chairman Colin, our both parts of, of the town sponsored long-term planning committee. Part of that is to understand the forward-looking needs and budgets of the school, both on my flat basis and on my growth basis. And so part of that is, you know, the work that Dr. Sol has done here to identify growth opportunities. And so that's, that, that is exactly the path we're going down, so we appreciate your, your support as well. Mr. Colin, anything you can comment on?
Two points, one, you've mentioned improvement of overall technology.
Yes.
Throughout the district. I think that it would be prudent to, when, when, when we're looking at those actual devices or systems. Whatever it is that we may be purchasing for any particular need, it may be prudent to consider more portable solutions or less permanent fixtures. Because, and, and stepping aside from any new construction, we may want to reconfigure buildings or classrooms at some point in time. So we don't want to purchase that and then lose it, right? Because it's, it's too, it's a permanent fixture or something, I think most of those devices would be, like even if we were to mount these on walls, we could take these things down. And at some point, they, they, the, the technology becomes obsolete anyway, but, but I just, I think it would be wise to consider that, so we're not, you know, sort of wasting money. And I'm sure you.
Oh, we have, we, we have a very detailed by Lisa Raden report of everything, and you can, you can see two of the models. We were using one here and one's behind.
That's right.
So we are, you know, we, we are absolutely considering that.
Very, very good examples of the poly machines, they're, they're a good solution and they're portable and they're stored in closets or rolls in other classrooms. So I just want to make that point and the, the latter point is my primary point, which is. In my opinion, the most glaring need from a teaching and learning perspective in our district, in education. At large, in my opinion, is more experiential and project-based learning, okay? That is the most robust and robust learning experience that will yield the greatest returns in terms of retention. And also fostering of different interests, so, and you're, I, I think you're sort of, you're mentioning like a new way to teach science, like. Let's get the students out of here and into like, you know, I don't know, biology class goes over to Island Creek Oysters and sees how they're farming oysters and how these things grow and the life cycle. You know, something like that, like that is going to drive home these concepts.
Yes.
Much more meaningfully. And I, I, I just want to see that we, we've seen a few examples in the spotlight on learning where there have been some more out of the box approaches to lessons. But we have to make sure that we're always striving to push past this, as, as some of us have referred to it, stage on the stage where it's just rows of desks. And there's instructor lecturing, sometimes that's necessary, but that should no longer be the norm. I want to see, like, we had a presentation in here last year where Mrs. Ryan had taken a civics class to the state house. That was good, I want to see more of that, but that has not been some valuable exercise, that should have been like, the, the fact that had not been done. Is very concerning, so like, it's good that we're doing it now, but we need to, that should be the norm. So I want to make sure we're, we're really stressing that in all of it. Now, I know our hands are bound to a certain extent for state curriculum requirements. I understand that we can't just be running around on field trips all the time, but we have to have a lot of them.
Yeah.
I think that's how we're going, it's one way where our academics will, I think, you'll see us emerge as a sort of exemplary district.
Well, you, to you, to your, thank you for that, to your point, next spotlight is on high school internships. And the, the, you'll see a lot of the project-based, problem-based, authentic. When I, when I, what I really mean by authentic is real-life experiences where they're taking a problem, making a change and coming up with a.
Right, so we've created a more formalized process, you know, Jen Scott, a lot of credit for this, she did a lot of work last year and then over the summer. With, along with Principal Scott and we, they've done a nice job to really make it so that it is rigorous and there's criteria. There's a whole format for it, so that's going to get people out and doing, working in different areas and.
And you'll see some of the, some of the work that's being.
That's going to be great, and that's in line with your community engagement superintendent goal, which will trickle down to, to building goals and classroom goals as well, hopefully. Because, you know, it's in line with the, you know, that whole, and the, and the school committee's goal of developing that community sort of, you know, I don't want, what you call it, like network phone book type thing where you know who has what career. And who would be a good contact to go to for certain resources for students or certain lessons, like, like where I had the kids in the Hangman District Court to teach the, the criminal. Like, like where I had the kids in the Hangman District Court to teach the, the criminal justice class, you know, that sort of thing. I just use that example because I know about it, right? Because I did it. But, but there's, there's a litany of people in this town. It's a degree-laden community. So if we, and, and so that, that, I think I saw that embedded in your goal.
It is. We're, one of the things that we're, we're going to do, and I know the school committee has some thoughts about this as a potential, I don't goal or carry on.
A goal for, for, for you as well, but we are looking to create a, a really robust volunteer organization, working hand-in-hand with the PSO, uh, and other groups that really impart their knowledge on our students and work with our staff to, to help with that. So that's a huge piece of family engagement and community engagement
It's free.
that you should see at every building. And it's something that really, I mean, remember, our vision is to empower students to improve communities. It, that's a great vision for Cohasset, because we're a small, close-knit community that has a lot of skill and a, and a lot of talented folks who, who can help our, our, our kids. And so there's, there's a lot we can do. Um, and, you know, our teachers are awesome too. They're doing a good job. It's good to pull in, pull in when you can, and that's a resource for us.
I think it relies on the teachers. I'm, I'm not saying that we're replacing teachers. I'm saying that we
No, and I
If I, for the resource, just, we, we sort of, we sort of buttress the teachers and, and allow them to breathe even more life into their lessons by taking them to a place where the kids could see that hands-on.
That's right.
They'll just retain it. It's like that Thermopylae, Battle of Thermopylae, I think it was a Minecraft project or something. That, that allows, those kids will never forget about the Battle of Thermopylae.
No, they won't.
Okay? They'll never forget about it. They'll never forget the parties that were involved, that the different weapons that were used, the way they camped. They'll never forget about it because of that. They'll remember it as, we're forty-year-olds.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm telling you, and, and it's, it's, it's just a more meaningful learning experience. So I just wanted to put that out there.
It's a good use of technology.
That was, I love the passion.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Thank you.
Um, I, I have nothing to add. I think this is, this is a, this is a great initiative, as, as you know from our conversations. And, uh, giving us a roadmap to how we, how we move forward. So, uh, I know we have at least one more meaty, uh, agenda topic. So I want to, I want to progress at time and, and move to that. But I think we go now to, uh, unless there's anything else on, on planning for the future, Dr. Solon, I'll turn it over to Ms. Owen for, uh, budgeting finance.
And I'm going to make you a co-host.
Ms. Owen, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, it's too hot tonight because we didn't, we didn't have an end of year, um, June. Um, if you were still watching from June, in July, August, but, um, if you recall during June, town accountant, in our request, transferred two hundred thousand, um, to our school budget from the space stabilization fund. So we had originally asked to use the two hundred thousand, um, for our FY twenty-three as part of our budget. Um, the cleanest way to do it, based on the town accountant recommendation, was, was to put it into our FY twenty-two budget, buy ahead, spend tuitions, which would free up two hundred thousand and balance our twenty-three budget.
A lot of conversation on that one.
A lot of conversation. Um, so that is what we did. Um, so we increased our budget, obviously by two hundred thousand dollars. So our budget might be twenty-one, six, eight, four, four thirty-two to twenty-one, eight, eight, four. Um, we expended about twenty-one million, eight hundred fifty-six, two hundred and ninety dollars out of the twenty-one, eight, eight, four. We're carrying currently twen-, about twenty-five thousand dollars in income of purchase orders that we paid as the supplies, materials arrive. Um, this year, it wa-, it was a very tight year. Um, there was a lot of things going on. We had a lot of adds and changes. Um, so the remaining balance of two thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars is what will be turned to the town. Um, not a big chunk of money, um, but definitely not in deficit, which is good. Um, and then any savings realized from those purchase orders that, that get canceled or come in less than what, um, we had, we had anticipated, that money will also be returned to the town, just come back to us. So, I mean, so close on a June, all salaries were paid out. There was no areas of concern. Um, so unfortunately, you know, we've given money back, more money than two, twenty-one hundred dollars in the past years. Um, controversial whether you want to give back more, whether you don't want to give anything back. Um, so this year, we didn't, we didn't have much to give back. Um, we actually had to offset, um, some of the budget with some of our revolving accounts, just because, um, the loss of the COVID grants to the continuation of some of our COVID practices, um, we had to have been a budget, so we didn't leave much left. Spent tuitions, um, we were, you know, budgeted at one point one million. The stabilization fund allowed us to buy ahead tuition, as mentioned. Um, we expended one point five, which includes buy heads, which less a shortfall of about a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And I may report, you might remember, we reported about, um, a deficit of three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. So, um, we made up for it in the end. It, you know, could be children didn't, children in this, this tuition outplaced, didn't go to schools many days as, um, anticipated, or they aged out, or they, um, transferred to different, different schools. Um, but it, we did see, um, a reduction in our shortfall in spent tuition, which is great.
Ms. Owen, does that, does that three thirty-five, I can't recall from May, does that include the impact of the two hundred thousand?
No.
So, does, and, does the one seventy-five include the impact of?
Yes.
So, so excluding that, so that it went up from three thirty-five to three seventy-five, do you reincorporate that two hundred thousand? I didn't, that's right?
Both of them exclude the two hundred thousand.
Oh, both exclude, okay. Thank you.
Um, so all tuition, all tuition's were paid out for twenty-two. Obviously, we've closed the, yeah. Um, utilities, another area that we look at, we spent about ninety-eight percent. Um, so there's no areas of concern there. Um, another area that we, that we were concerned with, that we watched, which, um, also led to the lack of remaining resources and the use of revolving funds, the custodial supply. So custodial supplies, materials were over budgeted by about a hundred and nineteen percent in FY twenty-two. Um, we budgeted sixty-one thousand, we spent a hundred and thirty-three. Um, due to the loss of all the S R support, the COVID grant support, um, if you recall, you know, we added all air purifiers. We added all the touchless, um, hand sanitizers and soap dispensers and sinks and paper towel dispensers. Um, with the loss of the grants, we had to absorb all those additional costs to continue those practices out of our school budget, which is why, um, you see, we over-expended our custodial budget. Um, we have since kind of backed off a little bit, so we're still following the same practices, which is maybe not doing them as frequently. So before, we were, we were spraying down the classrooms, um, twice a week. Now it's down to twice a month. Um, so you'll see, the expenses will start to balance out again. Next is just the budget by school. So you can see, um, the Osborna Elementary School expended ninety-nine point three five percent of their budget. Deer Hill, um, expended a little four hundred percent of their budget, so it left a, a small deficit. The middle school, um, was a ninety-eight point five four percent expenditure. And the high school was a hundred point one four, which left a small deficit. Uh, uh, again, they balance out because it's really the bottom line that we're watching. So in one area, we might be over, but in others, we're under. Um, and it all balances at the end. So it's really the bottom line that we're looking at. Third breaker is just, um, again, I put it out there so everyone sees every year what the percentages are and what the amount of investment we get. Um, in FY twenty-two, we had a fifth payment, sucker break, uh, of extraordinary relief and a amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand. We had to utilize that in FY twenty-two, which is probably partly why our shortfall came down. Um, you're qualified for the extra, extra ordinary relief, just to demonstrate the cost that we claimed. And sucker breaker, in our coming year, exceeded the cost from the year before by twenty-five percent, which we did. Um, which is why we were given the extra two hundred and forty-nine thousand. Normally, we carry current year into the following year with extra, more extraordinary relief. They don't allow you to carry it. You have to spend any year they give to you. Capital outline, um, FY twenty-two, you can see, you know, the deer here, the deer, deer handle is, and the middle school age back system. Um, facilities has recommended that we go out to bid, um, form some more quotes and see if we can get, um, something, uh, bids that are closer in line with what we budgeted for. Um, Nick Moriarty, the facilities director, believes that we can. He thinks we should reach out to different vendors. Um, our current vendors that, that come into our systems, that gave us some of the recommendations and these numbers, um, didn't bid on our projects. So if we put it back out, they may bid on it, and the quotes are based on what they suggested. So we might have better luck that way. And then the other items, you can see, the sprinkle head, we completed, um, the turf, the turf, Saturday to BD. The track is in progress, um, here. I mean, when I wrote this report, it was a few weeks ago. So completed by ten-four, it might be maybe a week later, but the track is well underway. They, they were out there all day today. They work Saturdays, they work Sundays. Um, the only, the only delay would be rain, um, weather wasn't permitting. So maybe fourteen dry days to work. Your thoughts have been completed. Our science lab, which I heard's been in the waiting for seven or eight years, is complete.
Mm-hmm.
Um, everything's up and running. It's beautiful. Um, so now we have all of our science labs completed. Um, and then the pilot technology, the chromebook lease, the schoolboat lease, obviously, well, you know.
Just got plumbing and gas.
Plumbing, gas, it's good. And I
It's a fully functional.
Fully functional science, it's really nice. They did a nice job and
So they don't have to go across the hall to get the water.
Um, and then the, the capital for next, for this current year, um, we've really got a good, good jumpstart on it. So, um, almost everything's been completed. The school bus lease, we did. The middle school paging zones have been completed. We're tweaking them. Um, I do know, like, in opening day, uh, I think it was the, fire chief, Doc?
Doctor.
Right. He, he came in and said, hey, I can hear Dr. Sullivan's speech out in the parking lot. What's going on? Do you know that? What's the new paging system and PA system? Um, we put speakers everywhere, so.
Yeah, we fixed that, so you don't hear me anymore of that. I was just talking in the office. I'm just kidding. No, I was on the
The name is got to hear opening day speeches. Um, furniture replacement at Deer Hill, um, she's ordered everything. Replacement chromebooks, obviously, it's completed. Um, the retile of some of the classes at Deer Hill's completed. The hundred thousand dollars that we estimated, just based on, um, the cost of supplies. Didn't get to complete Deer Hill, so you'll see another request on next year's capital to continue the process. The field lights have been completed, the locker mechanisms in the middle school completed. Um, they installed the AC splits for the middle school health clinic completed. And the creating of a hallway to access, um, the additional bathroom has been completed. So, uh, everything for this current year is pretty much complete, um, except for, we're waiting on some furniture. And the track, obviously, but that's the last year's capital. Uh, just a summary of the electric. Um, interesting to see that we used, we used more kilowatts last year, but we spent more this year, and that's just the normal price of everything, I'm going up. Um, so you can see what, what we've used compared to past years in our electric. Same with gas. Um, then you can see, terms are down, costs are up. Just following the trend of prices of everything have gone up. You know, we did, like I said, we did only use ninety-eight percent of the budget, so we're still within our budget guidelines. And then our grants, um, the S R grant, this is our last year twenty-three. Um, and then we have no more COVID or S, S R support systems and grant, and grant funding. Um, all of our other grants, as you can see, were expended, um, except, I shouldn't say except, um, title five, title four, three oh nine. Um, has five thousand dollars uncovered on purchase order. It, it could possibly have been paid by now. Um, because supplies have come in, I'm not sure. Um, and then you see the other, the other grants, we've expended all the dollars down to zero. So I'll be filing my final reports on those in the next few weeks, just to close all those grants. And then the hundred seventeen and the S R grant will carry into FY twenty-three, which is this year, and it will cover, um, some reworkshop, and I believe covers two staff members, I think, two, two part-time reading specialists. Next year, if we did decide to continue with the reading specialists, we would have to fill them into our budget. Excuse me. And our grants, again, help support, um, our employees. So we have twelve and a half additional staff that we can, um, continue to employ, um, just by funding them through our grant. Evolving accounts, um, I'm not going to look through every one of them, but I know our key ones were the, with the very high balances. You can see now that we've closed out the year, athletic revolving is, it's down, it's up, it's up over the two hundred thousand mark. And, uh, school transportation, you can see, we have a hundred twenty-four, which is not a bad figure. The, um, one area I would look at is the school lunch program. And most of the districts in the state are having conversations about what do we do with all this extra money? Um, because they've made the last three years, well, including this, this year, we're in, lunches are free, everything's free. So we're getting full reimbursement on every piece of food that we, um, give out to students and staff. Um, so the districts are talking about, you know, I've got five hundred thousand left. What do I do? The state's saying that I'm going to penalize us. Um, they want us to think about ways to reimburse them into, you know, back into the program. So that's exactly what our food service program has been doing, um, what we do in the whole kitchen and this building.
Let me just, what is, what, we got two different moves here. Mine's
Uh, okay.
Two different years.
So what, what, what year is this?
We're going to go down next.
This move's twenty-two? Yeah, okay.
So it's the end of the year, and then it's the beginning of the year.
You're in twenty-three.
What year is that?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
We're ending, so we didn't do the end of the year when we decided, do the end of the year, the beginning of the year.
We're in June right now. We're in last year.
Back to the future right now.
Yeah.
Back to the future.
It's confusing, I know.
It's okay. Um, and it was to tell you, you know, our revolving account, remaining balance of a little over a million dollars. Part of that million dollars includes a hundred and forty-one thousand in deposits for FY twenty-three. Um, two thousand for preschool, sixty-eight thousand of that figure is for full day kindergarten for this current year. Seventy thousand with bus, bus payments. Another expensive fees accounts cover salaries for about twenty-five and a half personnel, which obviously leads to, um, the revolving accounts. So in conclusion, even though I put twenty-three here, it should be twenty-two. My mistake, I'm sorry. Even though it's been another physically challenging year, we've been able to close the, the budget. We, we pulled over, say, continuing to maintain a balanced budget, grant was only twenty-one hundred dollars, um, which would be terms of town, but there's no, um, no areas of deficit, no areas of concern. It was just very close to the, you know, balancing out the year. Okay, if there's any questions on FY twenty-two through June?
Any questions on the committee, Mr. Carr, on twenty-two?
What? Oh, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Kenny, on twenty-two?
Yeah, I'm just, um, what is the exact money? What, what's the figure that we took out of revolving accounts? Is that, that concerned me, because to be honest with you, I had no clue. I was kind of like, dumbfounded by the fact that we took out our revolving accounts and put them into the general accounts.
So, so we didn't, we didn't take from revolving accounts, just put into the school budget. Um, it's, so the, the majority of the school year, for example, athletics, we paid for everything out of the school budget.
So you reimburse
When we got, when we got to the end of May and June, if the athletic budget was running in deficit because we charged everything to it, we then transferred those expenditures over to the revolving account.
Oh, so there was no money that wasn't just taken
Oh, no, 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 no.
Is that same thing with the food services? Like, did we take money out of food services?
Food services, no.
No.
Um, because they're completely self-funded.
Okay, so no money was taken out of revolving accounts?
No. Um, so it's the same thing with like kindergarten. So throughout the year, we pay from the school budget, our kindergarten teachers and staff. But then we charge off half of it to our revolving account.
Right, right, okay.
Um, and that, that's what helps us subsidize our school budget.
Yes, I'm just, it also could, in, in all this, is there any point that we could add all this and show what exactly that we have?
Sure, that's important.
Yeah, just total it out.
Absolutely.
Because, uh,
Yeah, it's a lot of numbers to add, you guys.
Yeah, yeah. And, um, you know, it, the other thing is too, is like, so what are we doing with some of this money? Like, the school committee, we have thirty thousand dollars in gifts. Those are, I bet you those are design gifts, specific things that are out there, right? Like
Yes.
Some of them are general. Yeah. But a lot, a lot of the money. Can we go into each one of these accounts and try to figure out what we can do to enhance some of the programs that we're talking about? Such as, you know, we, we're talking about having a play, I know we're having a middle school, it would be nice to have a high school. Do we have fifteen thousand dollars to, to get that going?
So I don't have the, the documentation in front of me, but I don't have the, the documentation in front of me, but it, it's similar to like the C E F. When they, when they give us a check for an amount of money. People have put in for they want, you know, it's designated, it's designated to certain things, so the same thing with school committee gifts, so what happens is. School committee gifts is kind of like the. The bucket where everything goes, where. Deer Hill. And Osgood, you know, collect bottle caps or life touch for the pictures or all the funding.
Right.
Goes here, or if, you know, if we have someone give us a check for something specific. Like a garden and a deer hill, it would go here.
Right.
And then we expend it out there, rather than have a separate account for every single gift that comes in.
Right.
We put it.
So possibly Ted and I and you, and when we get to our next committee, we, we can talk about what exactly we can do, because if there's resources here, we should use them. Because. That's what Steph.
Like, if you look at like the school athletic hall thing, that five hundred nineteen dollars has been there forever. It can go towards, you know, go to, towards something in athletics, but same thing with the school. The school summer institute gifts, one hundred twenty-seven dollars, we can carry that from the end of the year. I mean, I don't have any backup that designate anything, so it's just sitting there, so those amounts.
A good idea.
Yes.
Yeah. And it's still on me, right? The other thing is, when we, are we talking just budget right now or facilities here?
Budget, right.
Okay. I think we're good.
Yeah, yes, please.
But since right there, we have a remaining balance of one million nine, nine oh eight, so, I mean, I totally, I just can totally there.
Good.
So. I know that we've talked about this a couple of times, and you haven't gotten a bit of investment yet, but the, the, the unclaimed desert grant line. There was billions of dollars, so I, I, I have to presume that there's still some unclaimed money, I wonder what they're gonna, I, I would, I would like to have some benefits, that possibly, you never know if you don't ask, I know it's probably unlikely. With the grant application process, but let's just keep on following up on that until we, honestly. They might not even have the answer, which is why they're not getting back to you, they might be sitting on all this money, it's like, I, I, we, even if we get like, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars, it can be, that can be a new position. For a couple of years, you create, you know.
No, absolutely, I really. The last time I talked to, I even talked to Jay Sullivan at Desi, last time I talked to one of my contacts there. Basically, what they're waiting for is the districts that didn't touch their money to use it. So they're still giving them time to expend their money before they give away.
Seems to me like they don't have a need for it, they haven't used it. Right, so let's just be first on the, first on the waiting list when it's, yeah, I just want to be, let's just get squeaky wheel.
Absolutely. We could do a lot with that five.
We sure can, yeah, yep. All right, thanks, thanks for some, thank you for the show. And then, Ms. Owen, the only thing for me is you've balanced the budget within two thousand dollars on a twenty-two million dollar budget, that's fairly impressive. Thank you very much, but in the interest, time, let's move on to looking forward now, kind of forward. And just as a reminder for, for everyone, the, this is, we are on the fiscal year, which is, is it, is it, is it August, is that it? Or? July, July.
July first. Right? Well.
September thirty, June thirty, isn't it?
June thirty. We're in fiscal year twenty-three.
We are.
I'm just trying to find it.
Do you want me, I have it.
Do you have it, my mom?
Do you want me to share the amount?
I just found it.
Okay.
So moving into current year. And I kind of summarized July and August. Rather than doing month by month, I just summarized them, so it will give you. A total voter budget of the twenty-two, three, four, five, three, five, two. This represented an additional six hundred and sixty thousand dollars or three point zero five percent increase over FY twenty-two. Obviously not what we intentionally, you know, originally asked for, but it's all that the town could contribute just based on, you know, revenues. As of August thirty-first, we've expended it over, over a little over a million and a half, and we've uncovered about a million. Dollars in purchase orders, which is, you know, supplies, materials just waiting to come in. Salaries currently sales. So for July and August. The salaries that will be, will be paid with just administrators, central office, secretaries, custodians, summer school employees and IT staff. Starting on September, you'll see the salaries begin for the teachers, the parent professionals and all the other employees. No areas of concern, you know, obviously, we've probably only had three payrolls, so we're not that far into the year. Supplies, materials, we're still seeing lots of requisitions and requests coming in for purchase orders, you know, to purchase things. Because of how closely we landed twenty-two. I'm, I'm. Giving it very close oversight to make sure what people asked for is what they're putting in requisitions or purchase orders for. So if, if it's not something that was on their budget worksheet. The answer right now is no. Because I don't know how the year is gonna end, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to. Staff and partner heads to stick to what the requests actually were. So we have a better idea going forward of what projections should be. You can see this, the four schools. And what percent of the budgets. They've used so far, I added a column here, just, for instance, you'll see more coming in the next, next reports. I'm going to start reporting more about staffing and full-time FTEs. So you can see Osgood has forty-seven, Deer Hill has forty-five, so they're pretty close. Middle school has forty-seven and then the high school, this sixty-seven, we also have to remember that in the high school. All the custodians are there, they're not broken down by middle and high, so that partly why that number's higher, obviously. More students, more staffs. Circuit breaker, so circuit breaker, like I said, we used the previous year, so in FY twenty-two, we received seven hundred and one thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars. This amount was carried and it's higher into this year. This was based on a seventy, seventy-five percent reimbursement rate, which is set kind of a standing rate for the last four or five years. It could go down at a time, I'd say it could go down to seventy-two, I've been in. I've been with it when it went down to forty-two. But they, the government or federal state will usually offset it with some other type of funding. So. That's just, you feel, circuit breakers, state program, providing school district reimbursement for some of the costs incurred for providing. Free appropriate education to students with special needs, so we get a reimbursement on our out of district placements. We talked about capital already, I'm not going to go over again. Same thing for this year, just when everything is completed that we requested for this year, where we talked about our next year requests. And then we talk about the grants, so this year, the grants, as you can see, there's no additional S R or COVID grants, we lost the two American. Grants. So it wasn't, you know, one of them was less than ten thousand dollars, so it wasn't, it was no, it was no big ticket, one of them was about seventy-five thousand dollars, so. That, we would say lost in our grant funding for this year. Most of the grants go up, except for Title I. Title I seems to go down every year, but it's based on, but it's based on.
Financial need.
Financial need.
Students who, who are very reduced and there's a huge jump. Where the, we're always kind of, it's like five percent, it's that percentage, it jumps a big amount of money if you're over it, one year we had that. And the last year we haven't.
It's been dwindling, it's been dwindling the last couple of years.
It's, it's, it's a huge difference.
Again, great, no, but grant allows us to employ another twelve point three additional staff members, so it definitely helps. Revolving account, revolving accounts, you can see. What, what we've brought in so far, when you look at the third column from the left and fourth column, it says receipts, so that's how the money was received. The month of July and August, and you can see what we should have expended, what's been encumbered. One area that we're looking at is the school use of facilities, you can see there's a deficit of about forty-six hundred dollars. That's on the agenda to talk about. In the near minutes. No areas of concern here. We've seen this once before, but you'll see, going to see more and more of it, the more and more details, so this gives us an idea of, based on what Desi's. Requirements and categorizations are, you'll see FTEs, which is full-time COVID. Versus headcount, so headcount is bodies, how many humans are here? And you can see we have two hundred and twenty-two FTEs and we have an actual headcount of two hundred and seventy-four employees from the school budget. This is our, these are our grants that we just talked about, and how many staff members are employed through our grants. And our revolvings as well. And then. Point is, you know, you know, the usual concern for unproceeding special education tuition or utility class, you know, very early on in the year. I have no areas of concern, you know, we're just, just getting up and running, the budget is proceeding based on our projections. I don't know if there's any questions on. Like I said, it's right early on in the year, so there's no areas of concern, not worried about anything, but your moment.
Do our current based structure, Mr. Carr, any questions on the FY twenty-three?
It's on the presentation.
Mr. Kerry, anything on FY twenty-three, I know you have a question on facilities, we'll get to that. Mr. Vaughn, no, just checking, right? One question, I think I asked this last year, Ms. Owen, do you run a projection for end of fiscal year to see where the budget is projected to end, as opposed to. And see where that compares, assuming a flat cost curve and so on?
We do, but it, it's so hard to follow because it's, it's, it's fluid, it's such a moving target that. You know, we have one, you know, if you have one special tuition, maybe two hundred thousand dollars.
So I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm just curious if you, if you had that, if that indicated any concerns, you, you indicated in the memo no concerns, I'm assuming that, you know, based on everything you've seen, you know, there are concerns, but. Just wanted specifically projecting out, assuming no major shocks, you've got a, a, a projection that shows where we could land.
I would hopefully land it, Sarah.
Yes. So the goal for next year is less than twenty-one hundred dollars.
I'll do it, I'll do it.
I do have one question, and this, if it's money, if we're talking about money here. Can we re-oppose the, I'd like to see the warrant public again, I feel like it's not public. I, we all signed the warrant, I feel like I can't ask any questions, I feel like my years passed. We get the warrant, we all sign it, we send it around.
Physical warrant?
Yeah. Think we can put that back, you can sign it, because like, I really, I see it on the weekdays, but I really don't have time to like, ask the questions back from work, where I feel like this is.
Take that offline, and we'll, we'll pick out a process for that form of, any operations sort of question.
Pre-COVID, we did that. Yeah, I'm just asking, can I bring it back? That's all, and I, this is the.
Pre-so, so.
It was before. Yeah, well, like you said, I was.
I'm not sure.
We were privy to what was being spent, so I think that's important, that we see what's being said, and if I have any questions before I do the warrant or assign it. I ask you the questions, and that was the, what we used to do pre-COVID.
We'll talk about that. So, no other questions for me? If someone has anything else on, on budget and finance, I can move on to gifts.
Yes, so.
Do you have the gifts?
This is, do you want to do any?
No, you do.
So Class Education Foundation, again, has been very, very generous this year. They came in last week with a check for seventy-eight thousand twelve dollars. The breakdown is here, I can get the goals up quickly.
Yeah, I can actually show that on screen.
It's phenomenal, I mean, the amount of money. So, you know, this, you know, five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars to financial literacy. Culture workshops at the high school for forty-nine hundred dollars. Invisible difference, I have chased them, gifts in art, the two thousand dollars for middle school. Math tools, the middle school for twelve hundred dollars. Modern classroom at Deer Hill for twenty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. STEM integration at Deer Hill for fifteen hundred dollars. Computer lab smartboard at Osgood for seven thousand dollars. Another invisible gifts and art at Osgood for twenty-seven hundred dollars. And then at the Learning Commons STEM STEAM Lab at Deer Hill, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, and that totaled to seventy-eight thousand and twelve. What Pat has up on the screen is, is the detail.
Detail, if you'd like me to read these, I would.
No.
Fine.
Mr. Chair, would it be all right just to highlight the two five-figure ones?
Yes.
Because I think that it's, it's, I, I think they're, they're.
Which ones?
The two five-figure.
Okay.
If we could just highlight those, I mean, you know, I, I, I think those will be fairly.
So the, the STEAM, if you, I'll, I'll start, and if you want to jump in, but the STEAM lab, and then for those who don't know the acronym. STEAM is Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Mathematics. So this is a, a way students can, in many ways, Mr. McClellan, what you were talking about with those authentic learning experiences. Delve into that within a, a lab, and it facilitates that. The idea here is the broader project working with the C E F is to revitalize the Deer Hill, what is now library. Into a space that is very much like this, I mean, if you think about that, that it's smaller, but it's a beautiful space, it's wonderful windows. And it's just a little, it's a, and I think I'm not speaking out of turn here, but it's a little cluttered and not, I mean. Might not be the right word, it's just not set out.
Very much like a, it's a traditional library setting where there are lots of bookcases, it's not a movable or flexible space.
So working with our librarian, working with the, obviously, our director of technology and digital learning and, and Principal Sullivan. The idea is in two phases to have the space next to it, which is now a STEM room. Sort of blow that out and have it be one space that kind of merges the two, two areas.
This is awesome.
It's so exciting, and we've priced it out, we've sat and priced it out, and we're working really closely with the C E F to provide that innovation.
I can't believe it's all costs.
So.
No, well, phase one.
Oh. So, right, there you go.
So we're, we're looking at replacing all the furniture in that space and creating really kind of what you see, you know, I mean, obviously.
It's like a library media center, just the labs connected, so it's a very flexible space.
Right, is the kind of learning, just more senior schools?
A learning commons, a learning commons, and this is, you can see phase one, it brings a join to a larger room with a variety of technology, specialized furniture and technology equipment. To support communication, collaboration, so that's a big one. And there was another one you wanted to.
A modern classroom.
Modern, right here, yep.
I'd like to see our director of instructional technology is the grant applicant in both of these, right, so it shows that.
Yes.
Really sort of taking.
Yeah, she was looking at the learning spaces, and, and this is some work to try to help out some students who have some specific needs and, and various learning. Challenges, and, and this is a wonderful opportunity to reinvigorate that space by looking at it. Trying to be, create more universal design furnishings. Technology seating, flexible seating, and again, incredibly exciting and immediately impactful on those students.
Yep, it removes barriers, the furniture removes barriers and makes it all accessible for all students, depending on what your needs are.
Great, it's great.
Steps toward modernizing, or further modernization.
Steps toward modernizing, or further modernization, modernization of our abilities. He's having trouble with us.
Absolutely.
What time is it?
And this, the, the breakdown, this description, it's in your packet too, so.
I just have one question, only because the parent's been all over the place, okay? Financial literacy, um, when is that going to start? At the end of the year, beginning of the year? Is that for seniors or which, which deal with that?
Number one on the list.
Oh, the grant, the grant for the financial literacy.
Financial literacy, which is awesome.
It slowly falls, um, in the, in like March, but, but I, I, I.
I don't know.
On that, yeah.
Okay, what do, what do, what do we see?
I'm going to find out for you. I don't know, I know that, I know the program, I've, I've been a part of it.
Okay.
Just fading, it just.
Yeah, I'm just like, is that like seniors that do that? Because it's like, is it that when you invite like businesses to come in?
Come in and, and the students are given, um, they're giving a job, they're giving, um, they're given a, a budget.
Right.
Then they have to go buy a house, they got to write, so they just get all up.
I think that's seniors though.
I, I'm, I'm going to write that down.
Okay.
Bring that information back.
I participated as a business owner with Branger and it was great, but it was, it was at a different location. It was more like the kids all got dressed up and they had lunch for the kids. It was really, a really cool experience. So I was wondering if, if we're going to do that and, and if we're looking to get some assistance on that, I'm sure Branger would help us, so I could find out.
Well, I know Ms. Fitzgerald has gone out and, um, worked to, with, with the, the actual founders of this.
She has, yeah, and then she did it when I, when I first got here, it was that, yeah, and so I just can't remember all of it.
Back when she was the co. But did an awesome job and it's, we're very proud of this and I'm glad we brought you back, you know, and after COVID. So I'll find out the specifics for you.
Can I sit somewhere else?
Yeah, next time I'm, I'm already, I made a note, I made a note, rearranging seats to separate.
I kind of like it, I like it at the end.
Great, yes.
Okay, you know, thank you.
Great question, um, I just don't have the details, I'll get it for you.
So, just want anything else?
No.
Great. Uh, I am glad you highlighted the financial literacy fair. I'll use the springboard to say, make a suggestion or a comment that, that I'm, that I would love to see more financial literacy into our curriculum, into our core curriculum.
Oh, yes.
I think that's an area that's underserved, especially for kids, um, but even for adults, I mean, you know, understanding what insurance is, how to use it, when it's important. These are huge things. And so I love to see that the, the CEF has, has sprung into action here to, to help kick that off. So I guess the, the only thing I will say is thank you, thank you, thank you to the, uh, CEF.
Yeah.
What a phenomenal, uh, organization that we have here and what a privilege we have in co-hasset to have an organization like that helping us out. And, uh, giving us the opportunity to create these great, uh, great programs and do these things for our, for our students. So thank you very much to everyone involved.
And they presented a giant check to us.
And I saw there was a giant check.
I do. I think Ms. Barry was watching for a while at least. I don't know if she's still on there, but thank you.
She was, thank you very much for, for all you do. And with that, I will, this is one of our agenda items where we do have an, an action item. So with that, I'll take a, you know, I'll adjourn the motion to accept the gift uh, as presented here at the school committee.
So.
Second, second, we have a move by Chairman Colin, Vice Chairman Colin, second member by Mr. Carr. And we'll just do a, we'll do a roll call vote, we'll just do all in favor. We have one extension of any votes. Okay, the motion carries by, uh, by the unanimous approval of those present at the meeting. So thank you, thank you, thank you, uh, Class Education Foundation. Looks like, uh, we have another gift, uh, as well, at least right here.
Sorry. Yes, sir. Yeah, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Yes. I'll take it.
Thank you.
Got it. I don't know the same thing as. Yes.
Yes.
This is a gift from the, from the, uh, parent student organization of seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, forty cents. Thank you very much, PSO.
It's for high school planners?
Sue, you know, I, I didn't, I wasn't aware of what it was for, I mean.
High school, high school planners?
Okay.
Should I text my wife? You can text.
It says right there.
Right there, high school planners. So I, I apologize for not being prepared for this portion of the meeting. But I do want to thank PSO for everything they do, and this is also great for our high school planners. So thank you, PSO, seven hundred and thirty-four, forty.
Unless there's any discussion from the committee, I'll adjourn the motion to accept the gift from PSO, so. Second, all in favor? Any votes? Again, unanimous by the four members at the, at the meeting. Thank you so much, PSO, for, for this gift and for all you do for our, our schools and to me and keeping our families and students and teachers all together and, and collaborating.
The planners do.
Excellent. So that, that includes the gifts, uh, building and school property. Ms. Owen, uh, the floor is yours.
Do you have?
President Chair?
The rental fees?
Yes.
So I know as I reported on, um, our bottom accounts that are, there are facilities rental isn't in the negative. We're, we're not in it to make a profit. Um, we are in it to maintain our systems, pay our custodians, you know, help with electricity and water and heat. So currently. Can you go to the existing? Not sure if that's before or after. There it is. So this is our existing schedule. It's kind of confusing. Um, we looked at surrounding districts, um, and we looked at, um, some of the charges. So if you look like, for instance, the gymnasium, what, what's been happening and what has happened. We're, we're losing money in the sense that someone can come in and pay a hundred dollars for the daily rate. But then they're gone by ten o'clock in the morning and then they talk to their buddy, and it's not everybody, but it happens. They talk to their buddy who then comes in and uses the same facility for something different. It's one instance. Um, another example is when we close off that gymnasium on that particular day for that group and they're gone by ten, we're then turning down another group that would like to use it.
Right.
Um, so the daily rate doesn't work, it doesn't work. And you'll see how the districts do not do daily rates. So, you know, we have the three, you know, we're not recommending changing a lot, we're not recommending the groups. We have the, the school groups, the nonprofit groups and the for-profit groups. We need to get rid of some of those daily rates and just go by hour. The seasonal rate, we would like to take off. Ten dollars per child per sport, um, does not cover anything. So we'd like to just take it out of there, forget the seasonal rate, charge by the hour. Um, and if you can go now to the pose. It's, it's much simpler, it's cleaner, hasn't changed in a sense of the categories are the same. School, um, school groups, no charge. The hourly rate and, you know, you can see for the gymnasium currently we're charging twenty-five dollars. That doesn't help maintain or sustain any of the wear and tear that goes on in there, the electricity, any of it. So, you know, we're recommending doing away with the daily rate and, and upping it to seventy-five an hour. Um, but then with the auditorium, you know, you can see it's thirty-five an hour. Or, you know, the cafeteria is thirty-five an hour. So our big areas, which are our gym, our field, um, those went up from twenty-five, our field was fifty, um, to seventy-five. So it, it's not a big hike, but at least it will keep us out of the deficit and, and help maintain and sustain our buildings, um, because we are using them. And um, you can see here, you know, the hourly rate and the front corner is for the for-profit. So obviously that hourly rate is a little bit higher. And then down below you can see a custodial fee. So, um, on Sundays, I know, you know, like I said, we're not in for profit on Sundays. Deer Hill's not normally open on Sundays. We're not running water, we're not using electricity to a point, we're not using heat or air conditioning. But we're renting the, we're renting the building out on Sundays. Um, so we at least have to maintain and, and bring in some revenue that's going to cover those costs and also cover the additional time for custodians. One of the questions, you know, came up that we've had discussion about, if our custodians are in the building, we shouldn't be charging the group a custodial fee. Which is not always the case. Um, for example, um, custodians yesterday, I believe, were requested to go into the gym and set up volleyball nets, which they know nothing about. Which took them some time to figure it out because it has to be a certain level. Um, so I do feel that the custodian will not make additional money if it's during his regular hours. But if, if it's an eight-hour day and one of those hours is spent setting up a volleyball net, then that rental group should be covering the cost of that one hour that custodian is working.
I mean, volleyball is typically something that's incident, schools or.
What they're doing it for, a, a nonprofit or something else.
This was a different group.
This, oh, for a different group, okay.
So what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, or what we've talked about is just for clarification, is for instance, you know, custodian A works an eight-hour day. School budget pays for the eight-hour day, but if that custodian is now spending an hour setting up or taking down.
Yeah.
And cleaning up after it, then the rental group or the facility revolving should pay that one hour. And we should charge that group that one hour and then the school budget will only pay for seven hours.
Excellent.
So, you know, it's not a, like I said, it's not a profit generating, it, it's a revenue generation and we, you know, we have to help maintain our systems. So we haven't increased them by a lot, but these rates have not been raised in I don't know how long, because no one remembers the last time they were changed.
We thought it was six years, we talked about this in nineteen. Maybe six years.
So I'm just, you know, I, we do need a vote on it. I'm just, um, I'd like you to, you know, consider it and, and make a, you know, the proposal, um, and take a vote on the new rates, um, and just implementing that it's more of a operational housekeeping thing, the custodian salary of how it's being paid. I don't know if there's any questions on these. I mean, and we generally with the daily, the daily rate, there's a hundred dollars for the day. We were turning people away.
I'll look forward to the question, Mr. Carr.
Uh, so we participated in this group, I would say, is a number of things that are very helpful here. It's appropriate to always review these types of things, so it was time well spent. I think these are very good suggestions. It also helps administration with, um, collections. And we're going to use a technology to help with the bookings, allows groups to have more access to the thing. So I think this is all, uh, this is all very appropriate, so.
Mr. Chair?
I just have, I just want to remind you about, Sue, you did a wonderful job with this and your staff, because it's like, it's not something that you needed to do. This is something that you saw that wasn't fair and you acted on it. So I think, you know, I do want to give you some credit with, along with your assistant, Jerry.
Cherry.
Cherry, she was.
Cherry Lynn.
Hey, Cherry Lynn, excuse me. Um, I just felt like in that meeting, we were like fighting for the kids and you, and you, I could feel that with your staff and I just wanted to share that this is just really good stuff.
Yeah, you know, you know. I, I don't want to try to make a profit.
Right.
But I just want to break even and cover our costs.
Yeah, and, and to be honest, you saw something that we weren't really getting compensated. It was costly.
And it is costly, because, you know, we have to schedule, you know, it's online now, but we have to schedule, we have to make sure there's a custodian to open and close, um, you know, there's some administration, administrator.
And these prices are reasonable, believe me, I'm in the business. It's like, we do rent, move them in the club and to rent the pool is two hundred dollars, you know, versus, you know.
And I've seen that, I've seen like three hundred.
Yeah, so these are really reasonable rates. I don't think it's, uh, by any chance unreasonable, but so I'm.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McClellan.
Just for the purpose of uniformity, let's see, why don't we just make all cat B fifty dollars and all cats A hundred dollars? That's going to be better for us and it seems to be pretty simple. And they're nominal charges. As Mr. Kearney alluded to, I mean, they're very reasonable. So like, in other words, fifty dollars on all of the cat B decreases a couple of them, but overall it's a net plus for us as a district.
Well, depend on the, uh, how much usages of each space.
Well, it's true.
So if you're using the, uh, gymnasium more, you know, I just, I know that's balanced out with that thought, like, you know, people don't rent the, uh, Deer Hill gymnasium as much as they, or I should say.
Like a classroom.
Yeah, a classroom.
Should someone really pay fifty dollars for a classroom? I mean, that's totally up to, you know, what.
It seems arbitrary either way. I'm just saying, it just, it would just make sense, like, you know, you run a rent, an area in the school, people just know it's fifty bucks an hour for nonprofit, they know it's a hundred dollars an hour. But that's fine. If you thought this through and there's a committee that did this amount of, that I just, it seems arbitrary.
Right. So, uh, I first hand you the word. This is, this is great. I love the idea of the day, the daily rate going away. That seems like it was round manipulation. And I'm confident a bit by the, the fact that, um, it was looked at by some committee and that the, um, Mr. Kearney here, this is reasonable. What I don't have yet, um, that I would be interested in is whether or not this increase would impact the ability from some of our, uh, nonprofit groups. I'm thinking specifically basketball posters to use these facilities. I know that they're used, uh, and I know that those, those organizations aren't necessarily lavishly funded. And so while one from twenty-five dollars an hour, seventy-five dollars an hour may be a nominal increase, that could potentially be the difference in having a basketball team or not having basketball team, um, or that being able to do it or raise the rate. So, um, did any, anybody reach out to the people who are users of the, the, um, facilities or store users to see if they have feedback on it? I mean, no one's willing to pay it, right? So let's see if that would be an existential issue for any of them.
No, we don't.
So you're, you're talking about like the town hoops?
As an example.
Yeah, okay, um, so their fee would be increased because it's, it's the rent department. So we're talking about.
The rent doesn't pay. Rent department doesn't pay.
Okay.
Rent doesn't, yeah, rent doesn't pay us anything.
Oh, so then it wouldn't affect basketball.
Okay, so what is, do we know, do we know, are there other groups that would be impacted? I'm just, I just want to make sure we don't, by raising a fee fifty dollars an hour, we don't take away something that the kids are using. And if we need to because of costs, I'm fully supportive of it, but I just want to make sure we thought that through. And if, and unless we need this, maybe, then I don't know if that's an extra homework that other members of the committee would find valuable and maybe to. But.
There was some, we did discuss about timing. This was something that was appropriate to do as soon as possible as we begin the school year. I, I might suggest that maybe our committee can meet regularly and just sort of take a look at these issues going forward. If some group has some financial hardship, we could come back.
Right, we could consider a financial hardship.
Solution. To, to change it.
Because you got a good point. We don't want kids not playing basketball.
But if the committee wants to wait a little bit, I'm sure we could do it. It's just, it's sort of, we're into the new year and it was sort of an interest.
People, people hung online and, and reserving, so they, they kind of want to know what it's going to cost them. And, you know, we, we ask that they pay, they pay what they, when they reserve.
Up to you.
I'm having an urgent motion. Um, if people want to make a motion to approve, um, my, I mean, I'm, I'm, I have reasons on the, um, you know, what the impact, but I appreciate that people would look at that and sure that. So we have a motion to approve the, uh, the change in the fee schedule?
Second.
For a second? Okay, uh, will we roll call Mr. Carr?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
And this thousand net, uh, motion carries three to one and, uh, please, Ms. Owen, direct you to admit that. I do appreciate the idea.
We will stand up.
Now, if this is a hardship, we'll, we'll consider. As we do with anything.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, that moves us on to our transportation.
Transportation, um, not a lot to discuss, other than happy that our bus fleet is fully fully staffed. Um, we still have one, one, one bus driver that is, um, waiting just for a test. So we will have an additional bus driver. Um, the area that we are having trouble with is, is getting, um, drivers to do our athletics. Um, transportation. Um, one, because a lot of, a lot of those away trips obviously leave before the bus drivers are back. The, the flip to that is a lot of our bus drivers don't want to do the additional. So, um, I know Steve has been struggling. I know Ray has been doing the trips himself. Um, even though we've tried to get him staffed so he could free him up to be off the road, he's doing, he's doing some of the field trips and the staffing. I'm going to know some of our staff will do some of the trips, um, but there's so many different sports going on at the same time that we don't have one, the abundance of drivers to do it, because some of these buses are not returned into. One, we have a bunch of drivers to do it because some of these buses are not returning until four, four fifteen, four thirty, and some of these teams are leaving at two thirty, three o'clock. I mean, that's just, put that out there for everybody's willing.
Mm-hmm. Another transportation, um, note, as we promised, we'd have a late buses for our, our Mecca students.
We could.
We do. So we have late buses, uh.
Wow.
For, for.
That was quick.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, we're sharing, sharing with Hingham. And it, uh.
Right, so you can get more participation in sports.
Absolutely.
That's phenomenal. Was that at an initial cost? I guess that was very quick. I didn't expect that to come together so quickly.
Well, it was a, it, it was a, I don't know the specific cost, but it was a good, um, collaboration with Hingham. We found that was a, a better option. For us than to use, um, local motion. Uh, or we were ready to do that, but the Hingham solution seems to suffice and, uh, it's working.
Which in the past we've had a regulated Mecca transportation with Hingham.
We did, yeah.
So it, it works. It's a great idea. Um, the other thing on the transportation is. We have an engineering firm going out to Deer Hill first week of October to scope out that new bus parking lot.
Can we use the baseball field again so we don't have to lease somewhere that? I mean, is, are we on a, are we on a thirty-day? I hope so. We're not on a commitment.
We're in a month, month.
Month to month. So why don't we just save thirty-five hundred bucks a month and send it over to them?
Um, well, I think it's a little more complex than, I don't think with the, and I don't know the specifics about who, you talk about wheel right?
I'm talking about, putting that, uh, where we're used to.
Yeah, where we, I'm sorry.
Because there's no one using the field right now, so it'd be a good chance. I'm just saying like, that, that would really save us.
I don't think that's an option. I don't think that, and it's not our doing. I, I, and I don't want to speak about why it isn't an option, but I, because I. Can't really remember, but I don't believe we've been given green light to use that space.
I mean, we can show.
Well, it's part of the, so it's the.
But we did before. Are they saying no now?
Yes.
And is that the, is that the, is that the baseball, uh, E S Y? Is it them?
Well, there's, there's a couple of things. So I think we've had some conversations. We do, they, we very much appreciated what they did for us here during our period that we needed. And they were there. So there is an element that we don't want to impose on them. We ha- we also have this arrangement now. And if we break it now, we might have to look back. And if we, if this doesn't work out, we might, so, so.
We're working on an alternative.
We are working on alternative, but, um, you know, we, you are right to be thinking about that. We're, we're thinking about it.
Correct.
What about the library?
Using the party library?
Yes.
Uh, I don't think.
They were also asked, um, I know Glenn Pratt had asked them and it wasn't known. Like he went around to all the same groups that we have utilized and it was no.
In the DPW where they used to be, which is now newly paved by the dump.
Seasonal sand.
They had to build.
Not in the actual hangar, but outside of it.
Okay, so, so you have an engineer coming in October?
Uh, first week of October, um, to come over there and, and give us, you know. The information you need to move forward on, you know, what to, to put on a capital request and what's, you know, what's going to cost, what's going to entail. Um, we don't really know. I mean, it's, it's probably the best solution we've had so far. It's level, it's clear.
Well, I like it because it adds parking.
And there's plenty of parking.
Anybody went to the open house.
But it's great, it just, it'll be realized not soon.
Right.
That's all.
Well, I'm hopeful, but it's probably spring.
Okay, so what else we got? Anything else?
The transportation. I don't believe so. I know the, the GPS tracking system has been great, um. Every year we have more parents signing up for it.
Awesome.
Um, it's been a great investment.
So when is the, uh, the school bus program start? Already done? For Mecca students? I'm sorry.
So I think that's it on transportation. The only, the only other things, you know, I see food services on here, um. The complete kitchen redo is going to happen on the holiday break just because. Materials weren't available, can't do it now because it's going to take them. I'll be due to redo everything. Vending machine arrived.
There's no, nothing in it.
We're waiting for the.
Yes, every day.
Right, did you?
Yes.
We're waiting for the, the, the vendor has to come out and set it all up.
Okay.
Um, so I talked to Marilyn from Service Director this morning and she said, she's waiting for them to give her appointments, come out and. Okay, up and get it running. Cause it's something to do with the mosaic and the.
It's gotta be great.
The POS system.
It's gotta fill us with some twinkies. I'm just kidding, I'm joking. I know, it's gonna, it was, it's gonna be good, really.
Okay, so that would be probably by the, a week or so?
I would say in the next few weeks. I would hope, I would hope.
I just want to see if they can get an apple on it.
And then the last thing is, is you, as we've all seen, is our, our track is obviously. Started off being finished, um, fourteen days it will take us, we talked about in the press box, um, outside the press box is done. Um, we're waiting for wiring and stuff for the inside.
It doesn't work in the inside.
Um, but the outside is done.
Um, okay, I'm looking back to food service unless there's other questions. I know, and I can't remember, we talked about this, we're serving breakfast now.
Yeah.
Uh, and I just.
Yeah, breakfast is free.
Yeah, how that's working with strike of the school day, because I know we have timing and, and so on.
How, how it's working just to. Is, it's incredibly popular.
Yep.
Um, I believe Deer Hill said something about a hundred kids. The interesting part about this is that. Because it is free. It's not a situation where families are necessarily, um. Knowledgeable about who's having breakfast. So I just want, I'm putting it out there, I haven't solved this one yet, but, but I mean is. The, usually if you are, you know, your, your son or daughter are, they're having breakfast because you see the, but now it's just.
Just go through.
They're going in and so I think the popularity of some of the breakfast items were driving more kids to. So this is just a, I, I, we, we need to problem solve. This is, this is something we, remember now, we're only in the second week of school, so we recently. Uh, third, but we recently established this is a. An interesting thing. It's free and we have a lot of kids going and we're trying to figure out why. We, we like it in some regards, but then, because we want kids to. I think it's, might be somewhat due.
Well, is it, is it, where is it? Is it just popular at elementary level?
Yes.
Well, then the reason is to me readily apparent. That means that there must be some. Sweet offerings there.
Well, we're gonna, when the menu, as the menu shifts, we'll see if that's it, but, but that is.
Guessing there's probably like, you know, I don't know what it is, waffles, french toast, dicks, pancakes or whatever, you know, stuff like that.
Well, yeah, we're following the, we're following the FDA formula. We're doing that, but I, but I would agree with you, like. This is something you, we're not used to giving out free breakfast.
Of course, so yeah, but I, that'd be my guess. So I'll be curious to see what you find out, but that would be my guess, but elementary level.
But extremely popular.
Yeah, so my guess.
Off the bus, they go right in, but it seems to be working efficiently though.
Oh, no, it's not, it hasn't been a problem at all. Nobody's missed, I mean, people are, they're just, it's very popular.
Do they have time to treat time?
Yeah, it's built in.
Yeah, they, they do.
Because we have to provide lunch anyway, it's the law, so. I mean, breakfast.
Yes.
Oh, it is law? This is a law, we have to provide breakfast too?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah.
And we, have we been getting away with not providing?
No, we've always provided breakfast, but it's free.
Ah.
But if they offer the breakfast, they can't get the free lunch, right?
Well, they can't.
They can't.
They get both. Which is why we're generating so much revenue because we're getting reimbursed for all this.
All right, I thought it was one or the other.
So I don't know, I don't view it as a problem per se. It's just like, I'm thinking as a parent, like I don't necessarily know, I would know, I know.
It might be a problem for the parents. If the parents don't, I don't know what we're offering, I have no idea what we're offering.
So we, we literally just realized this, this, because we're, we're tracking it and we're realizing, so we're. We, we're gonna problem solve that. I would take ideas in box.
There's coffee cakes there.
I mean, I could communicate.
I don't know if there are, I think.
Please ask your, please ask your, ask your chaplain there, eating breakfast.
We have a, don't we have a luncheon together on the sixth of October? We can ask the questions.
Yeah, but I'm, but you're just saying, it's like, it's, so you're, you're, the answer to your question is, it's going really well, really popular, a lot of kids eating. But.
What are they eating?
Yep, well, they're reading, they're reading the prescribed.
Breakfast, I believe it's muffins.
Yeah, there you go.
I think, I know, I would ask this, Sue.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a hot.
Sue, when we need on the next school committee nutrition, nutrition meeting, could you bring us real simple? What we're ordering? Because that'll tell us. It's real simple.
I mean.
What, 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 what are we ordering for apples? What are we ordering for oranges? And what are we ordering for coffee cakes? So we'll know that. We'll know through the food budget. So I'd like to see at this breakfast or lunch that we would have. I'd like to see who we're buying from and what are we buying? The simplest.
That's fair, yeah.
The ingredients.
Yeah, we'll be sharing some of that last time.
Let's get into it, let's get into it.
Okay, but we are, could you bring that information? That's all I'm asking.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else on food service from the committee? All right, uh, we'll close off food service. Last is our standing agenda item and typically for Mr. McCollum and Mr. Kenny report from the school facilities committee on the budget much.
We heard much so and say that next week we have a very, in my opinion, a critical day, uh, where the MSBA is coming in that next phase of our SOI. Uh, process, our application process, so we'll keep you posted.
Is that school facilities committee still meeting right now or is it just?
Yes, yes, for sure. Yes, it is. They're just, they're, they're fairly concise meetings right now, just because, you know. If we do get invited to participate, then the whole, you know, community becomes involved, you know, overnight, so. Um, but right now, obviously, if we're not invited to that, there's not going to be much of a discussion, yeah, so.
I will. So we'll close off budget governance and resources, moving on community relations communications is where we have our, house our reports, our school committee subcommittees. And now that we have them, and our liaison, so, uh, Mr. Carr.
Um. Let's see, so. Uh, on the select board one, the, uh, open season for special town meeting, um, items is. Open now, I think we'll discuss that here as well, and. Um, just want to flag that for an issue for the upcoming special town meeting. Um. Communications, nothing really there.
I was scared.
Same, we got a meeting, um, to talk about finances, uh. Happy with the school year, happy with the Browns, happy with the school. But.
Mr. McCollum, you have a report? You have a report? Uh, I'll report, we have Miss St. Don's that we had a meeting with the, um. School governance committee to talk about, uh, the, the, the report that was, um, presented here by Dr. Sullivan on his goals. Uh, so, uh, that was the, uh, beginning of that, so. That's our agenda item G. Um, there are no topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. Uh, we don't have any minutes to approve. Um. Uh, I do want to throw the four of our pretty future agenda items coming out of this meeting. I have a couple, um, but, um. Any that others want to raise, the questions that I see, um, future agenda items.
Can I just, just real, real quick on, on minutes, I'm transitioning with, with you on the minutes, um. Could we maybe speak offline, how you want, once I edit them, how do you want them back and stuff? Okay, great.
Yeah, um, oh, it's a future, maybe, um, you know, I, I, I know we're talking about safety. Uh, maybe, you know, we, we can bring in, uh, our resource officer, like they.
Yes, future agenda, we, we talked about that in our facilities committee, I believe, too.
Mm-hmm. And, um. That's about it. I, I had something else.
I just hope this is what I'm learning. I don't, I, I'd like to, um. See if there's any, there are any interesting writing projects that, that, that students have been involved in, at, especially at the, um. Either middle, but more at the high school level, like I'm thinking, you know, I, it's just such an important skill, whether it's, you know, creative writing or, you know. You know, uh, journalistic writing, whatever, something writing based. Uh, I don't think we've seen anything like that. Yet, so trying to think of an ELA thing.
We, we have distributed a, uh, format for people to sign up.
Okay.
Using a very similar, um. Uh, process that we had last year, um, just looking for it, I guess, just show you a little bit.
I mentioned one thing in that category, yeah, seniors, uh, it was super helpful to my son when he was applying to college, a good chunk of this time of year is spent on college essays with the senior class. And I think that's an ongoing activity. We found that to be a terrific exercise. Helps those kids, you know, that is a exercise in creative writing, so.
Right.
They really do spend a lot of time with the seniors.
Um, on the screen here, you can just see. Very small version, but you can still see it, um, of where we are right now in our signups and you, there's nothing. Necessarily identified here yet. Uh, we do have Deer Hill, uh, presenting an identity unit that they do, um, at fifth grade. And we do have the independent studies, which I mentioned, um, to you, Mr. McCollum, when you were talking about prob- problem-based and project-based learning. Um, and, but you can see what I've asked them to do. All student-centered, and, and this can adjust, this, they're just saying, but. All student-centered, two for each school, one Mecca presentation update, at least, we might bring them back for two. Uh, two technology presentation updates, one with student services, athletics updates, two, and an arts update, at least one, maybe two. So that's, that's what we're asking, but we can definitely bring that information back to them, to, uh.
Something I thought of, I just.
That's great.
I'm sure.
Great idea. I like it. I like the curriculum focus too. I think that's a academic and curriculum focus is an important thing for this year as we move into pre-COVID. Pandemic world. That's that, just want to show you that.
Great. Um. My, my thoughts, like in the, the unfolding side of breakfast, um, so that seems, seems an issue.
It's not, I would call it a summer, it's just, you know.
It was a surprise.
Yeah, right. Um, and then the other thing that I want to keep on our, uh, agenda, maybe not the next meeting, but for, for upcoming meetings, is, um. We talked earlier about, in our hopes and dreams about preschool revenue, um, and, and expanding the preschool. I think that's something that'd be interesting to model out, just to see what, if, if that's something self-funding. Uh, that may be an easier and a shorter path than, than we think. So that's, that's another thing I just want to keep on our radar.
That's actually timely because I think, uh, yes, Simone will be here, uh, and she does head up preschool, so that's good.
Perfect. Um. Any, there is no reason for executive session, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, so.
A second.
All right, motion, motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? All right, meeting is now adjourned, thank you all.